Ultimate temptation there, cake. I succumbed. Apologize, and I think Commissioner Cooper is probably right behind me. That's a great program, and of course, we're just delighted that fifty flags, six flags have been here for fifty years, and hope that they'll be here for at least another fifty years. So with that, first, we're only going to have, work with one tab this afternoon. Everything else, tabs two to thirteen, I think, will be done tomorrow, tomorrow morning at the, on the June thirteenth, Regly Bagley Board of Commissioners meeting. So with that, I will turn the session over to Dana, where I believe you're leading the discussion this afternoon about your budget.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. On behalf of the entire Community Development Management Team, I want to say thank you for having us here and letting us present to you our needs that are in the Community Development Agency, as well as some ideas on ways that we can do things a little bit differently to help the citizens of Cobb County. Briefly, Community Development is the development coordinating agency of Cobb. That means we handle everything from environmental mandates to the fiscal and economic health of the county, to the social welfare of the county. We are partly, we work with a lot of other departments and agencies in Cobb in order to help improve the built environment and quality of life here in our community. We are comprised of seven divisions, which I will go over in just a second. Here is our organizational chart for Community Development. We have Lee McCleed, who's our deputy director. Renee Morris is my assistant. On the administration team, we have Sean, Brittany, Wanda, and Annette, who all help out on the administration side. We have Jason Gaines, who runs planning, John Peterson, who runs zoning, Kathy Pickett, who runs code enforcement, Sandra Richardson, who runs business license, Frank Gibson, who runs erosion control, and Paul Laney, who runs development and inspections. In addition to that, and what makes Community Development a little bit different, is that we also have twelve different appointed boards and authorities that report directly to Community Development, that we help administer on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. And all of these deal with different aspects of permitting, licensing, redevelopment, or other areas of, or planning, or other areas of concern to the community. To kind of give a brief overview about what each division of Community Development does, and I'm not going to read this entire slide, I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights on here. Administration does the general oversight, whether that is purchasing, technology upgrades, communications, fiscal oversight, and subdivision acceptance are all kind of handled by the administration section and division of the agency. Business License is our tax collector. They handle the occupational taxes and regulated businesses, as well as other specialty fees like hotel motel taxes and, and other things. Code Enforcement handles our enforcement of ordinances. So zoning, weeds, signs, garbage, all of the great fun stuff. Kathy and her team do a fantastic job with the staffing that they have, and I'm proud of what they're able to accomplish for the community. Development Inspections are our sticks and bricks people. They handle everything as it relates to the actual construction process, whether that be disturbing land, whether it means putting up a building, and then eventually giving a certificate of occupancy saying that it is able to be occupied, and that is done in coordination with the Fire Marshal's office. Erosion Control handles the environmental side as it relates to water pollution, helping to make sure that erosion stays on a site and does not get into our waterways. Plenty of department are our big thinkers. They handle comprehensive plan, growth management, urban design, coordination with cities and counties around us, as well as geographic information systems internally for Community Development. And finally, Zoning handles exactly what it says, handles a zoning code. They are the administrators of zoning. They handle requests for rezoning and variances, as well as a number of different specialty Last year, as part of the budget, you assisted us in implementing a fee and staffing update, and I just wanted to give you a brief overview of how we're doing on that program. Before we start, if we hit zero on this number, that means we met our projection. So the fact that we've brought in five hundred thousand dollars over projection, when you take the renovation budget out of there that you've approved for us, that brings us to almost two hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue that we've brought in through this fee increases. We've hired about half of the positions that we projected. The eleven remaining positions will be hired once the space renovations are complete. We need space to put these great employees that we're hiring. And lastly, and one of the big things, is we have selected, from a session planning perspective, the person who will be taking over from Lee McCleed, once he decides that he no longer wants to be with us, unless Mr. Paul Laney, who will be the next chief building official after Mr. McCleed, makes decisions that he is able to make. Our revenue history, again, Community Development is a revenue generating agency, so it's hard to talk about budgets if we're not talking about revenue as well. So this is just a three-year and a year-to-date history, actuals, on how much money we've generated as an agency. You can see we range from fifty to sixty million dollars a year that we bring in on behalf of the citizens of the county. A lot of this revenue is regulated revenue, which means that it can only be used towards the administration of the services that we provide, although some of the revenue, especially the revenue that Sandra brings in, for occupational taxes, is not regulated revenue, and that just can be used for any type of operations for the county, regardless of, regardless of use. Here's a three-year spending history of the agency. This includes personnel operating and capital budgets. You can see that we've gone eight point six percent increase from fifteen to sixteen, and then another five percent increase from fifteen to sixteen. I said that wrong. Fourteen to fifteen, we had an eight points, six percent increase, and then fifteen to sixteen, we had a five percent increase. We average about eight million dollars a year in our overall spending for the agency. A lot of the spending also, to add a caveat to that, if the Board approves a specialty study that we hire a consultant for, that gets contained in the operating budget of this. So anytime consultants are hired for Community Development, that's actualized in our operating budget.
Okay, so why do we have a twenty-eight percent increase in administrative costs from fourteen to sixteen?
A lot of the costs on administration deal with the vacant subdivision registry that we have, or some vacant subdivision program that we have. Basically, what that is, during the height of recession, and I'm going to get to this a little bit later in the slide, but during the height of the recession, we instituted this program to help make sure that subdivisions that were left vacant during the recession somehow had a capacity to be finalized, because a lot of these didn't have topping on them. Half of the houses were built, half of them were unbuilt. We developed this program where people could pay by lot charges, and that money would get consolidated together to finish off the subdivision. And since that's run out of the administration division, that's why the operating costs are so high in the administration division, because we're operating this program, and that increase in number by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars has to do with us actually spending the money and finishing the subdivisions up, sir.
Actually, it's two hundred and thirty over two years. I don't understand. What operating costs does this division have?
The, it has to deal with the vacant subdivision program that happened during the recession, sir.
So what are the operating costs that we're talking about here?
It depends on the exact subdivision, because most of the program deals with topping subdivisions that were left incomplete, sir.
Topping the what there?
Topping the roads within the subdivisions that were left incomplete, so...
When they do the subdivision, and it's same as when you're like right now, when they're repaving Terrell Mill, and you see that small little bit of curb that still shows, most neighborhoods, that's how they get paved until the last house is done, then they come and they top it out with asphalt. But Dana, is there not the same revenue on the revenue side?
Yes, sir.
So this really, I mean, this expense is an increase in expense, but there's a comparable increase in revenue on the previous slide?
That is correct, sir, because the topping program is revenue neutral. So we bring in the money that we charge to the builders, who pay a per lot fee, and then that money is then spent to improve and finish up the subdivision that was left incomplete.
So your increased cost here for that part of the administration budget actually is accounted for in the previous slide? Can we go back to the previous slide, Dana?
Yes, sir.
So in the administration here, that money is in there?
Yes, sir. Because really, the administration does not bring in any revenue per se outside of the topping program.
Why is that, why is that a county expense?
What happened, sir, during the Great Recession, is that we had about one hundred subdivisions that were left incomplete, and there was nobody held responsible, because if that switches developers and builders, and then different people are buying different lots, it was a...
A mess.
It was a mess. Thank you, Commissioner. That was the best way I could possibly say it. And what we did is we got very creative, and we found a mechanism to complete these subdivisions, because you have to realize, there are people who are still living in these incomplete subdivisions. They may have built out two or three houses with the full expectation that their roads were going to get complete, but then if the developer goes south, and the banks don't pay the bonds, then we're left with an incomplete subdivision. So this program helped us get over the hurdle, and I think by the end of this fiscal year, we should only have about six or seven subdivisions left in this program out of a hundred from when this program was instituted.
But don't these developers put up a bond?
Yes, sir, but during the recession, what happened is the banks didn't, didn't pay the bonds.
So are these like reputable banks?
A lot of the banks went under, sir. A lot of the banks went under, and then the FDIC did not, the bonds went bad, once they got taken over by the FDIC. So this is why we had to get creative and find a mechanism in order to make sure the citizens of Cobb County were adequately handled with their needs.
But Dana, it wasn't county money. What happened was, when people came into the unfinished lots, they would put money into, if you want to call it this fund...
That's correct, Commissioner.
Right, so what, so if you had two houses in, say, a ten house subdivision, and only two were done...
Right.
The other eight, when they would come in, they would put money into this fund, so that then, when that subdivision was finished, and the roads needed to be topped out, then the county would use the money that had been paid in by the new homes.
Yeah, it works great. I mean, we...
It was, it was a very creative solution to a very difficult problem that was presented to us.
All right. Let me ask, if, so your agency, according to those, brings anywhere, averages fifty million a year?
Yes, sir.
And you spend eight?
Yes, sir.
I'm happy with that.
Thank you, sir. We are too.
Well, I'm glad you're happy.
Sure, absolutely. And their entire budget is self-sustaining from these fees, and, but they're part of the general fund.
Yes, sir.
But it's really a wash, so it's not money we're taking out of the general fund, because they're self-sustaining.
I think the challenge I'm having here is that when I hear administration, I don't hear O and M. I hear administration.
Correct.
We have an O and M aspect administration.
Because this topping program was so sensitive, and it was so vitally important for success, a decision was made back to make sure it was contained in administration, so the director would have complete oversight over this, and make sure it was successful.
Okay, all right.
It was the current county manager's program, when he was community development.
All right, well, if it's not broken, I'm not going to fix it, so...
It's worked remarkably well, and I'll show an update on where we are with that in a minute.
Get out while you can.
As we relate to the eighteen budget and the requests, we know, we understand that this is going to be a difficult, a difficult budget coming up, and we're just kind of, when we say requested increase, we're really saying, this is what our needs are as an overall agency. So we're not saying that, we're understanding the financial position we're in, but also saying that if you wanted to know our true needs, this is what our true needs would be, and we'll get into these items on item-by-item basis for each division.
Dana, no, we just saw, Mr. Weatherford asked, you know, fifty million and eight million. These are your needs. Are these coming out of your budget, or are they coming out of the general fund? I mean, do you have the money? Like, last year, you came to us with the book, and said, with increased fees, you're going to be able to pay for the new positions and everything else. I mean, can you pay for this with your existing budget?
Yes, we can, however, it would also, our money is general fund money as well. We're not a separate budget line item like FIRE. The FIRE Fund is a separate fund that pays for nothing besides fire and emergency services. Community Development is a general fund budget, is a general fund item, so yes, we do create the revenue that sustains our operations, however, we have to make the same requests that support services and public services and DOT and everybody else make, since we're part of that same overall budget items. Mr. County Manager, do you want to say anything, sir?
No, actually, Chairman, I was just, Dana did a good job. They need to come back and make a request to the Board. It's part of the general fund. Certainly, they collect enough tax money and permit fees to where they're covering their cost to the general fund, but they still need to go through the process the way the other general fund departments do.
It has to be approved for the budget, because you are general fund, but I think what we want to be assured is that the fees and the revenue that you collect is gonna, you're still going to be self-sustaining within the general fund budget. So it's not additional money coming to you with these requests. You'll be able to fund these requests. So to me, it would be an automatic approval if they're funding them.
And we'll certainly, and we'll certainly work with the county manager and, and Mr. Volkman in order to provide you that information as we get closer to the budget time. I just kind of wanted to give you a sense of what our overall needs were of an agency.
Dana, let me ask you this way, okay? You showed us the increases year to year in your revenue. So my question is, your expected increase in revenue for FY eighteen, will it cover the one point two million, i.e., if we give you one point two million more, you're not going to take any additional monies from the general fund than what you did in seventeen? I see Bill shaking his head.
I'm going to take one point two million.
What? I'll have the finance director assist me with this one, sir.
Bill, do you understand what I'm asking?
Dana does have continued revenue growth each year, but I think what you're asking is, is his revenue growth from seventeen to eighteen going to be the one point two million? I think that it's still, I, we don't think that's going to cover the increase that he's asking for.
Will it cover some portion of it?
Yes, he will have revenue growth into, from seventeen to eighteen, so yes, there will be a portion that would cover...
Because I think it would be useful for the Board to see what additional money Dana would be taking from the general fund, above and beyond what his revenue increase would be. Because that's really what you're asking for.
We would also want to separate our revenue between the regulated revenue and the non-regulated revenue, because the non-regulated revenue goes to overall county operations versus the regulated revenue, which should only be used for the Community Development.
Right, but where I'm going with this is that, you know, when the Chairman's looking at the budget, and we talk about how the money is tight, if you're generating additional revenue to cover your additional requests, the only thing that really matters to the Board is what additional money would, are you asking to take out of the general fund that didn't come out of it in seventeen?
And the eighteen projected or proposed budget, the way we presented it when we did the adoption of seventeen, does account for revenue growth. Now, with Dana's fee structure, we, what we're doing is going back and analyzing that to see if that's still a good number. So it may be better than what we anticipated, and then we'd be able to adjust it and give you that impact, so that would maybe be able to fund some of this, or we'd have to look at other options.
Okay.
If I may add to the discussion, Community Development is rather unique in the impact that they're able to have with bringing in as much revenue as they have to the county, that some agencies don't enjoy that capacity. But one thing I've seen is that the agency has partnered with other organizations within the county where there may have been some overlap in interest or services, or Community Development has stepped up and provided some resources. You know, one case of example of that is with Code Enforcement and being able to help support the judiciary, the magistrate office in adding a new position. So I don't know, this is just from my purview, what I do know, and I don't know where else they may be doing that, but I appreciate them doing that, and I don't know how that will be considered as we look at the numbers to see that this department has been able to, or agency has been able to support other functions within this budget.
Okay. Thank you, sir. There are a few, I'm going to go through and just kind of give you some big pictures before we dive down, dive down into each division, but big pictures of what our personnel needs are. There's not a lot of personnel needs, because you did just approve new positions for us in the last budget. We did have two positions that were frozen in approving the FY seventeen budget. When the economic climate is such, we would like those two positions to be unfrozen. In addition to that, we're in the process of implementing a business license audit, and one of the things that we discovered on that is some personnel needs within business license. So as, as funding becomes available, what we would like to do is to remove two of our part-time positions in business license and create two full-time positions out of that. And you can see the cost it would have in order to actualize that within our budget. From a capital request, what we have from capital request, again, this is agency-wide, our other capital replacements are computers. Each, and this is specific to field staff computers. When this was implemented with Acela, when we went out in the field and was doing real live time inspections and enforcement actions, those computers were not part of our computer replacement program. So Community Development paid for those computers, and what we're, right now, we need a lot of those computers to be redone, and we're working with IS to do that, and after this particular cost, those computers would then be covered under the IS Computer Replacement Program.
That's not part of the four hundred thousand dollars we talked about this morning?
I think that is a separate cost from that, sir.
Or Sharon.
Tough books for field inspectors who have to deal with dirt and...
Yeah, but you told me this morning that the computers weren't just PCs, they were laptops.
They are laptops, but they're not the rugged specialized ones like these are. Like, some of the public safety ones are not in that either. It's the regular specialty computers, they're not, they're in addition to the computer the person would have at their desk. These are desktop or laptop for individuals as well, we were talking about this morning, not their specialized computer they take with them, in addition to their normal computer they have on their desk.
How many different buckets of computers do we have in the county?
Well, we've got Public Safety has specialized computers, ComDev has specialized computers, Tax has some specialized computers, but they're in addition, they, some of them are iPads, you know, some of them are tough books.
Do they all come from the same vendor?
No, sir.
So why, why aren't we at least trying to do that, where we can get a...
We always check to see if that vendor has them, but many times, that vendor that we have does not meet specialty requirements that, like, Public Safety would have, and we try to get what the department asks for, when we can.
I would like one of those rugged notebooks.
Yeah, I'm not going to comment on that one.
Better, better childproof.
Yeah, I'm not going to comment on that one.
My screen just has a different feature than yours.
Commissioner, I will, once we get the funding, I'll be happy to order one for you.
That'll be another partnership you can work on.
That is so, that pandering, it's really, really beautiful. Dana, yes, clearly. Okay, I just...
These are specialty computers, they're not the ones people use for their everyday, you know, desk job. They actually take them out with them and do surveying and...
All right, well, could you have your people not...
DOT, DOT also has some, I forget the...
Could you have your people not drop them or run over them very often, Dana? I mean, is that possible?
You see, and the computer replacements, it's, it's not that the inspectors and Code Enforcement officers are misusing them, they're just, they're just old. They're just old, they're five years old now.
All right, okay, all right. Thanks, Sharon.
Vehicle replacements, these are just part of the normal fleet vehicle replacement schedule, so this is not a specialty request. This is just the, the normal vehicle replacements that they do on a, on a rotating basis based upon usage and age of vehicles. And then finally, new vehicles, we did have some new vehicles that were part of our fee and staffing proposal, that we would like to purchase in coming years as it relates to that. Those would be for eight total cars, vehicles, four for development inspections, and four for code enforcement, for the new officers and inspectors.
So your capital replacements for vehicles don't come under fleet management?
It does, and we're just, we're just saying, under the fleet program, that's how much vehicle replacements would be required based upon the existing fleet program.
Okay.
Can you help me understand your columns here? I'm trying to compare this to the last one. You have proposed FY eighteen zero, total requested is a different number. What's the difference between your proposed and total requested cost?
Well, there was no capital money provided in the overall eighteen budget at this point in time, since usually that's done through fund balance, if I'm, reserves, excuse me, thank you. So with, with capital replacement happening through reserves, there was none that was dedicated in the approval of the eighteen budget in order to take care of that.
But Dana, when you say that your vehicle replacement in other fleets, so when Eddie stood up here and talked about what fleets had, your vehicles were in his fleet's upgrade?
Yes.
So this total requested is if you were to ask for it, but you didn't because it's over there?
Yes. I'm just trying to give you a true picture of what our needs are as an agency.
Yeah, but I also asked Bill to make sure that in future years, we have capital replacement inserted into your budgets. You know, we're not doing this at the end of the year, look, grabbing into the bag to see what we have to pull out. That's stupid, all right? So I want to know the true costs of running your departments, all right, as far as your budgetary requirements go, and then we'll have to see what it is we can provide resources for.
Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each individual division and quickly just give you an update on how this compares divisionally, so you can kind of see, see where each division of Community Development is. I'm not going to have each individual division manager come up, but if you have a question about anything, I'll ask the division manager to accompany me in trying to answer your questions if necessary. So under the administration division, we've had quite a lot of accomplishments in the last couple of years. We've had a much more robust communication strategy. Last week, we came out with our first monthly newsletter. We've had a much greater effort in financial oversight. Freedom of Information Act requests are always very busy and get run out of the administration division, and of course, code amendments, which we're now doing four times a year. A quick update in, Mr., yes, sir?
Why do you have Freedom of Information requests in your department, and we have one up at legal, too?
Well, legal is the main portal for it. So as people wish to, to obtain Freedom of Information Act requests, that comes through the legal department. But then, in order to reply to it, they'll have to get with Community Development or DOT, or whatever the right department is in order to answer it. And I would, I don't know what the exact percentages are, so I don't want to say for legal what it is, but we do know that a lot of the requests come out are based upon Community Development actions. So we have admins that help the legal department in answering Freedom of Information Act requests that come through.
So that's a collateral duty for somebody in your department, it's not a standalone job, is it?
That's correct. The, the, the division assistants to each division manager assist in responding to Freedom of Information Act requests.
Okay.
So again, we started this program, the vacant subdivision program, we started this program in the height of the Great Recession, when, when banks went bad, developers went out of business, and we had ninety-four total subdivisions at the, in the start of this program. Now, today, there's eleven remaining top in the program to get topped. We have one pending bond claimed out that we're working with legal on, and we have three bonds that have been claimed. What this means is, as these, as monies go in, and we generate enough revenue from the topping fees and from the bonds, we then use that money to go out and finish the subdivision on behalf of the residents in those particular subdivisions. So we're, we're very happy with the status of this, and we think by the end of this year, we'll be down to a number of fingers in your hands with how many subdivisions are left. So we're ecstatic about the way, how successful this program has been. And on the administration side, what we're asking for is, is just some small increases as it relates to some of our operating costs, some additional money to help with our communications, since we're putting a renewed focus on it. We are assisting the county manager and the other agencies in a new Cobb 101 program, which will have a work session for next month to help introduce to the Board, and there'll be some startup costs as far as that. And then some of the challenges of this, of the administration division is really just helping the Board of Commissioners and staff deliver new programs and general oversight and fiscal accountability of the agency. Business License, again, accomplishments for the last couple of years. Online business renewals went live this past renewal season. We've had a great effort in regular, in modernizing our regulated codes, and in this year's renewal season, we finished two months faster than we ever had, have under Acela and under the new law that has been passed as it relates to immigration reform. So we're proud of the work that Business License has done. They've had a big part in the SunTrust Park, SunTrust Park and Battery Atlanta opening as it relates to liquor license and accessory parking and alcohol permits, so we're proud of their accomplishments.
Dana, how many, and I forget the number now, but how many alcohol licenses did they have to do in about two months? Sandra? Or, do you guys remember? It was in the thousands, wasn't it?
The number of licenses?
Or server, server permits?
Oh, yes, it was way up there.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, it was in the, in the multi-hundreds for, for both the Battery and SunTrust Park. And the assistance from Public Safety was great in that, and the teamwork between Public Safety and Community Development was great in... And the assistance from Public Safety was great in that, and the teamwork between Public Safety and Community Development was great in, in implementing that. As far as revenue highlights, Business License brings in a lot of revenue. Right now, year to date, we're about sixteen million dollars in occupational tax revenue, about a little over nine million for hotel motel tax revenue. Our liquor by the drink revenue has increased by fourteen thousand dollars between April of sixteen to seventeen. And then our hotel motel tax revenue has increased one hundred and thirty thousand about between, eh, 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 between April sixteen and seventeen. And we do equate this to a Braves bump as it relates to having SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta open in our community.
I think, I think the patio revision helped. All right, I mean, we need to make sure we give everybody credit here.
Under the Business License Division, all of the requests that we have are operating and personnel requests. I've talked about the personnel request already, talking about removing two of the part-time positions and adding two full-time positions. And the rest of the operating requests are just, are, are just requests for us to do our day-to-day jobs. Like the printing budget, that five thousand two hundred dollars is the budget, the additional budget that we need in order to do our business license renewals. If we don't spend that money to spend the twelve thousand dollars, we don't gain fifty million dollars. So it's a, it's a, it's part of the cost of doing business. The other item I'd like to mention, and I'm going to talk about this now and then later on in the slide, is increased credit card fees. As we do more and more business online, our credit card fees are going to increase. And as we get to new programs later on, I'm going to bring one up that we're working with the Finance Department right now to implement that's going to help offset that overall cost.
Need more money for a fee, it's just part of the, part of the fee for, for regi- using the, for applying for the business license.
Well, not for credit card fees, because credit card fees are, are.
I do that when I go, when I buy something at Ticketmaster, all right, they want money for me for using Ticketmaster. If they're going to use credit cards, here, don't you have a fee for using a credit card to make your job simple?
Right now, we don't, but that's what we're working with Finance on implementing right now, sir.
Okay, well, I just, I just want you to know that I'm just a helicopter pilot, you know, who pays fees for Ticketmaster for using their service.
We're working on it right now, sir.
All right, okay, all right.
Business license challenges, a lot of this deals with a technology and trying to work with the I S department to make the online payment process a little bit easier. We're working right now on potentially a new operating system for the Business License Division. And then really, when you, when you think about the way we do business licenses, we do renewals once per year. So because of that, we have to have an all hands on deck approach, where every employee for business license is working, helping to make sure that three to four month process is smooth and, and fast and reliable.
Talking about that software issue we had for processing the licenses, we're still working through that?
Yes, sir.
And where are we on that, Sharon?
We have a meeting tomorrow afternoon to talk about that in detail, sir.
Go back to being quiet.
Quick question, quick, quick data question, what's the turnaround time for somebody to renew their license on average?
For what kind of license, ma'am?
Their business license.
For a business, if it's a new business license coming in, um. About ten days, and for the renewal season, it depends on when they bring their renewal in, on how long it takes from res- from receipt through processing of payments. But again, we did decrease the renewal time for everybody in Cobb County by two months.
And I, I can verify that because we, we have this little game, I have a computer business that I get a business license for. And sometimes I'll go to the Government Service Center, other times I'll mail it, I just don't tell them. And this, this year, I got it back within less than ten days.
Okay.
By mailing it in.
So is it faster if you use a credit card?
Using the online system will be more expeditious, and our intention, by improving the online payment, is we'd like to get to the point where ninety percent of our renewals are done online. If we get to that point, it will be a huge improvement on our speed and efficiency, while at the same time making it easier for customers.
Dana, how do you deal with that, there's that one form that everybody has to do, or there's the two forms now? Can, are those, can we be able to be done online?
Well, that's part, that's part of what we're going to be looking at with our potential vendors, is to make sure whatever system we have can comply with the Immigration Act of the state.
And the Immigration Act, that form has to be redone every year? It's not something that we could keep on file?
It depends. It depends on who is bringing forward the license.
Because it would seem that that would help speed the process up too, if you didn't have to do that form, which has to be notarized.
So what does the state do? When you apply for a license with the state, do you have to go back and, do they have a, they have a process where everything's online, like Secretary Kemp's saying it is? So if they have that.
I need to get the expert up here for that, sir.
There are two affidavits, one is a citizenship affidavit. As long as this person who signs the renewal, signs it each year. Then they don't have to present that to us again. But the minute the owner of the business lets his secretary or his wife or his janitor sign that renewal, I need another citizenship affidavit on the person who signs. So that one can be done only once, as long as the same person signs. The issue with the private employer affidavit is if they have eleven or more employees, they have to get an E-Verify number. Once they get their E-Verify number, then they don't ever have to present that to us again. But if it's ten or less, that affidavit has to be signed each year.
That's a state or federal law?
That's the state law, State Immigration Reform Act.
But can it be signed electronically?
That's one thing that we're looking into now. There is an electronic signature as well as an electronic notary.
Right, because that's one of the ones that has to be notarized, right?
That is available, yes, both of those affidavits have to be notarized. Where we've been questioned recently about the E, E signatures as well as the E-notarization. And we're looking into that now. The way our online worked last year was you had to upload those documents. If you were going to pay it online, there was a provision for you to be able to scan and upload that document from your home.
Right. So is that, does that same requirement apply to, at the state level?
I don't know how the state's handling it as far as any online submissions.
I, I can tell you, when I register mine, I just have to go online to the state and, and click a bunch of buttons, verify that no, the information has changed, and then just pay the fee.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm not, we have a great system, I'm sure, I'm just saying, if there's something out there that makes, that makes our job easier way forward, we might would take a look at it.
Absolutely, and that's one of the, and that's one of the components that we're going to have when we're looking at new business license software to help, again, to make the, make it an easier experience for the end user.
Yeah, because I can assure you that anything we can do to help the business community, the word gets out, all right, and then more people want to come here and do business, so.
Absolutely.
But I, but that's not to take away from the significant improvement you've done over the last two years about speeding up the process. I don't want to take that away from you, we're just trying to make.
Now, let me ask you this question, Dana. Right now, we do the business license on a calendar date. I know at the state level, it's done on an annual basis whenever you initially renewed. If you go to a fully automated system, do you have to stay, because I know it's a huge lot of work for Sandra and her staff, doing all the business license in the county at the same time? Is there a way that the county could go towards spreading it out over the year?
Right now, our code says that it's going to be, it should be done annually. So I think it's something we could definitely look at and, and see if there's a way for us to spread that, um, spread that out over the course of, of a calendar year, whether it be done per, per day that they obtained their license or whether it be a quarterly or a biannual, we can look at options that are out there and, and see how that might be able to improve efficiencies.
The only drawback to that, Commissioner Ott, might be a little bit of an inconvenience to the business owners in that they're required to provide an estimate of the yearly income. And depending on what year they're accounting for, whether they're on a October one to September thirty, that might be something that Dana and his staff would need to look into as well.
The other, the other aspect to think about, and, and I think Bill is going to be happy I'm, I'm going to mention this, is the business license revenue also helps, the faster we get the business license revenue into the bank, reduces the amount of reliance we have on your TANs bonds. So there is a component to that as well, where the business license revenue coming in early actually helps your overall financial picture. And is that correct, Mr. Belkman?
When do the renewal notices go out?
They usually go out in October, late October.
Right, so, because we're on calendar year, not fiscal year. So what if we started sending them out earlier, like June, but they could, and they could renew? It just wouldn't be applied to their, the next year business license.
Yeah, because.
And that would, that would be, let, you know, that would help alleviate all the flood in October, November and December.
Well, well, plus, the same way you say that it helps for them minimize the amount of time we need the TAN, well, if you're collecting the money early in the year, you're not going to have to borrow as much for the TAN.
We will definitely look at it.
Why do they have to estimate what the business earnings is, is our, is our fee based on that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So what happens if they don't make it? They get a, they get, they get a refund?
The range, Chairman, it's usually zero dollars to ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
That's correct.
That's a hundred and seven dollar fee. The next interval is a range and the, the license, the occupation tax goes up based on the intervals.
So what happens if they make more than that, do they go ask for more money?
If, 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 we, we do have auditors on staff that do look at trend lines for each business license, and they do have the ability to ask for the books of businesses if we think they're not being truthful in their application. They estimate.
Okay, all right, interesting.
Getting into our second division, if I could make a segue, we, our Code Enforcement Division. This past year, they've made a, a very large effort to increase visibility in the community, do a more proactive communication as it relates to code enforcement, to help people realize how they cannot obtain a citation from the Code Enforcement Division. They're also helping implement the donation drop box ordinance. And something I'm very proud of is their assistance with Cobb County Police Department in the investigations of elderly abuse or of individuals that are in group home environments. There was a, 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 a very collaborative effort that occurred with multiple departments, and I'm, I'm proud of the work that our agency has been able to do to assist others in, in helping make sure that our, every individual in Cobb County is cared for appropriately. Looking at the, the overall requests from the Code Enforcement Division, as you can see, we have the personnel request I asked for earlier that dealt with the frozen position from the beginning of this particular budget year. And the most of the other requests for this division are the capital replacements for vehicles and computers. Getting into the challenges of code enforcement, this really just has to do with them getting out and doing their job on a day-to-day basis with the number of employees they have. Trying to make sure that we continue to stay on top of all of these items and make sure our officers are properly trained to handle the, the work that they do. Getting into the Development Inspections Division, we start seeing some big improvements in the way that we use digital government in, in community development. This past year, we've implemented an E-Plan platform for land disturbance permits, so people can do all of that online. We have, are in the process of completing an electronic commercial permit application. They were obviously very, very instrumental in the opening of SunTrust Park and Battery Atlanta. And we're currently working in a program with the Information Services Department where people will be able to get their inspection reports online and not have to use the call-in telephone system. All of these are big process improvements, making it better for our customers and, and for others. Getting into the revenue highlights of development inspections, you can see year-to-date numbers, about two and a half million for commercial, about one and a quarter for residential, and then everything else is in the, is in the, um, in, in the ranges, as you can see. The request for the Development Inspections Division, again, most of this money deals with capital needs, vehicles and computers. We have the one personnel for the construction inspector that was frozen at the beginning of this budget year. And then some minor operating requests that just help us do our day-to-day fee, our day-to-day work. You'll notice the credit card fee listed on here as well, which, again, is, is a mechanism for us to handle that, sir, that we're working with Finance on. Challenges for the Development Inspections Division. The state has approved the new swimming pool and spa code that we are in the process of implementing. Actually, we just released the code amendments on Friday, and this is one of the items contained in that, which is a state requirement since we utilize the International Building Code. In twenty nineteen is going to be some major upgrades to the energy code, which will have a very large impact on, on the way we do inspections. One of the things we'd also like to do is, prior to the recession, we had a program where inspectors would able, were able to receive a small pay bump if they received multiple inspections, and we would like to reinstitute that program in the future because it really helps us as far as managing the flexibility and, and enabling inspectors to, to do multiple inspections when they're in a field, in, at a site. Erosion Control Division, this particular year, we had the Second Annual Agroscience and Outdoor Recreation Expo. It's been hosted at Jim Miller Park. It's been, it's been successful collaboration from the Cobb County Soil and Water Conservation Commission in collaboration with the Georgia Farm Bureau, with the Cobb County Farm Bureau. So we really like this program and think it's a great way to get people out to learn more about erosion and agriculture in Cobb County. In addition to that, so far year-to-date, we've done thirteen thousand inspections for erosion control violations in unincorporated Cobb County. All of the requests from erosion deal with capital needs, vehicles and computers. The challenges for erosion control, really making sure that we have efficiently trained inspectors going out and doing the public's business as we try to make sure our waterways remain clean. Geographic Information Systems is a component within the Planning Division, but they do have their own separate budget as it relates to operating. So I wanted to briefly go over some of their requests. They've been experimenting this year with three D imagery models, trying to show planning functions in a three D environment. And hopefully soon, we'll be ready to go live on that with some of our planning functions that we do around the county. They've also created some historic driving tours, comp plan updates, story maps, to help the public better understand what's happening in these particular areas. And in addition to that, they maintained thirty-eight different land use databases to help make sure the overall enterprise G I S system works smoothly and efficiently. Their only request from the G I S department is a new laminator, our laminator has broken. And we don't right now have the capital funds to, to, to fix that. So we're asking for some money in order to make sure we can laminate the deliverables that we utilize when we're out doing public meetings. The Planning Group, when, when you see this number of items, it's not because the planning team does more than any, but any other division in the agency, it's just that they're more task-oriented rather than permit-oriented, so they, they have a lot more accomplishments as it relates to that. This year, we're in the final stages of doing our, our, our ten-year comprehensive plan update. Two new properties have been added to the historic register, and I'll, I'll make a note too of that. They've also sent out letters to every single historic property in Cobb County, asking them if they would like to join the historic registers. We anticipate having more coming in the future as we continue to expand that program. Also, I'd mention that we received funding for the Dobbin's Joint Land Use Study implementation, as well as working with the Urban Land Institute for a technical advisory panel to give us some new ideas for the Milford Osborne area of the county. Planning doesn't bring in a lot of revenue, but they do do film permits, and this is where their film permit numbers come in. So they generate about eleven thousand dollars year-to-date in film permits that are provided for filming in unincorporated Cobb County. And they also help out with zoning certifications and bring in about seven thousand dollars per year. As far as the planning operating, uh, planning requests, all of these are dealing with operations and things that help them do a better job of serving the public needs as it relates to growth management in the county. Some of the challenges as it relates to the planning team, we're really, um, the amount of work requests that we get outpaces the resource level. That means sometimes we're a little slow in, in getting deliverables out, but, um, we strive to meet all the requests that the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission makes. So we thank you for your patience as it relates to that. We're always trying to diversify our public engagement and try to make sure that every aspect of the community is involved in growth management for the overall county, and trying to make sure our staff is abreast of the new ideas and research that helps us do a great job in building Cobb County and building the community. Zoning, as we've talked about before, zoning has done a great job as it relates to trying to go more digital. As we've talked about before, zoning has done a great job as it relates to trying to go more digital. We now have an online sign permitting system through our cell operating system that allows it where someone can come in and get a signed permit without ever having to come and show up at the zoning counter to talk to John and his staff, so we're, we're happy about that. We've enhanced and gotten more information out online as it relates to zoning. And, and we are also, zoning was an integral partner with the Development Inspections Division on the testing and implementation of the E-Plan review. Fees for zoning, our zoning fees are about ninety-one thousand dollars a year-to-date, and our sign permit fees are about ninety-two thousand dollars a year per year so far this, this particular calendar year. Yes, Commissioner?
Going back to planning, what happened with our pilot program for the developmental signs?
Actually, it's going quite well, and we have a contract that is being reviewed right now by Community Development and Legal to take this program countywide. And that will be a, a small revenue generator, but it will add some additional revenue. More importantly, what it will do is it will allow us to change our code to no longer allow for the real estate signs that go out telling you to turn left for subdivision and what the price points are. So it'll help code enforcement in that regard as well.
I haven't seen the, the signs up where the pilot, the districts, the four locations.
We'll, we'll, I'll, I'll take some pictures of some of the signs that are up, Commissioner?
Okay.
And, and we'll send them over to you.
Okay. Excuse me, just in clarification, Dana, some new subdivisions do have the signs in front of it. You're not talking about those, you're talking about the directional ones that are at some distance.
At some of the intersections to say X subdivision, take a left here, correct. Getting into the request for zoning, again, these are all operating based upon our needs as it relates to just doing the day-to-day operations of zoning. Some of the challenges of zoning. One of the things that John and I have been talking quite a bit about is trying to digitize forty-four years' worth of zoning files. Any, any particular day, we could have an issue come up where we have to go back to what variance was provided to this property in nineteen seventy-four. And John and his staff have to go and find the files and, and, and investigate that. One of the things that we're interested in doing is digitizing all that through OnBase, which is our document storage system that IS manages, so that we can do all of this digitally rather than having to go back to a paper file in order to do that. Also, this summer, we have an intern from the University of Georgia who is helping us in updating and modernizing our zoning analysis. So, John and Jason and our, and, and others will be getting with the board members as well as the Planning Commission in order to talk to you about some things you'd like to see as it relates to updates to our zoning analysis.
What do you need?
Yes, sir.
What's with the-
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there's the, the additional parking passes, what's with that?
The additional parking passes, Johnny, is-
Are those the people that work in the building, or what? Bringing out the big gun now.
I think so. Good afternoon, my name is John Peterson, I'm the zoning division manager. We need two additional parking garage passes. We need one for Commissioner Ott's appointments at the BZA, Brian McDaniel, we don't have one. So every month, we get, we have to call the attendant to let him in, and then we need an extra card for the county staff person who sits up here to swear people in. So that's why we need two additional cards.
What happened to the pass the person before that?
Well, for years and years and years before our current board makeup, it was customary for the commissioner to appoint the same person to the BZA and PC, so we only had a certain number of cards.
Okay.
But now, it's, it's more and more separated out.
Yeah, I, I'm lost. This, this is a Cobb County car.
No.
Who, who owns this car?
The personal cars.
But, but for the BZA?
It, it, it's for the BZA appointments, private car.
When they come to the meetings. When they come for the meetings.
That's correct.
I know, I get, so, I thought with this new parking system we're going to have, we're going to give them some kind of a number. They just punch the number, they park free anyhow.
Right, but we all pay for our parking, I mean, you get a-
I know that, but this is, that, that's different, we're employees, okay? They're not employees. They're here on county business, we're asking them to be here, and we're charging them money to do county business? The answer is yes. So, we got, we can't find a way to fix this? For six hundred bucks? I, I know, but, but you're asking for six hundred bucks for, for something that's a sunk cost. This is a county building, they're here doing county business. I'm sure there's a way we can fix this without having to cough up money. Yeah, we do, we work in the building, all right? There, there, there are board members that we appoint to the board, asking them to come to this building to do work for us. And we're not going to charge them money to do that.
No, and Chairman, I do think that with what Eddie Cannon is working on right now and what we anticipate going out to bid for with the new automated system that it's going to provide us the ability to automate a lot of this to where we don't have to assign individual line item charges, particularly for appointed positions, because this same thing would, I think, apply to perhaps the Parks Board, some of the other advisory boards that serve the county, not just the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, sir.
Well, I know that when I go to KSU, they give me a number if I'm going out for business, and I just park in their parking lot, and I punch in the number on this machine, and it takes care of me when I go out, when I go out the gate.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming our system's going to have some kind of capability like that.
But, Mr. Chairman, you were punching that number, there's probably some department at KSU that's being charged for that. And that's what, that's all Dana's saying is, is that we give these folks a parking pass so they don't have to pay, but his department's being charged for it.
Why are we charging people to park in a county building?
Because everybody that, everybody that parks here, whether you're an employee or not, pays. And so all their, it's, it's an accounting-
It's different, I'm, I, I choose to work here. All right, these people have volunteered to work with the county, they're helping us, and we're charging them to work with us? These are our friends?
Yeah, all, all county departments, every one of them, have parking cards, parking cards that they have to buy for their employees and any other board members that would come up here. Been doing it-
Probably for twenty, at least twenty or twenty-five years. I think, though, Chairman, what we would be able to do is move away from the cards and simply have a running account. Some of these other, the, some of the vendors that might respond to our requests will basically, we won't- I think these cards are basically being, the, the, the amount of money that is being charged is thinking that they're going to be in here every single day. Versus with an automated approach, they're going to know that they're in here maybe once or twice a month, and the fees that are charged to the departments won't have to be as across the board as they would if you were to provide somebody with a parking card, if that makes sense.
Okay, I just, I just have this issue with charging people who are helping us.
Yeah, but, but, we don't charge them.
I know that.
Okay.
I know that, why, but why are we, this is like, we're just robbing Peter to pay Paul, this is a sunk cost. This is a county garage. And I understand why people like me have to pay to park in here, okay? Because I'm here five days a week. But someone that we've asked to come here to help work on a project, we're going to charge them money to help us? I mean, we're going to charge these other counties because that, that garage is already a sunk cost. We're going to be paying for that garage, not other hides of the county people, but people who want to come here and do business with us.
Correct.
All right, and who want to work on the, go do stuff on the square. That's where we're going, we want to be-
That's right.
Paying for that garage with, you know, that, those kind of population, not people that are here to serve us and make this a better county. And I just, I have an issue with us paying into something that's a sunk cost for this garage. We've already paid for the garage, we're paying for the garage, all right?
Correct.
And I have a problem paying for this off of the back of county employees. Other than, they're here on a regular basis.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say something, I'm probably going to get myself in trouble, but-
You probably will, yes.
Yeah, I think that previous folks that were managing the garage, it was done so to not show how much the garage costs to have, okay? And so by charging all the departments, basically, you had X amount of dollars that were brought in every year to cover the cost of operating the garage or to pay for having built it. I mean, the reality is, like you said, if the money is going from Eddie's department or Dana's department and into the general fund, it's going from one account to the other, it's not going anywhere.
Right.
But, if you're the person that's managing the garage, you can say, oh, well, look, we didn't cost you that much money because we brought in this amount of revenue, well, they brought in the revenue from over here in the budget to put it over here. I mean, the fact of the matter is, there is no revenue.
Right.
Right?
I get that.
Yeah, but I think it comes from when they decided to build a garage, they had to show that it could pay for itself.
Okay, all right.
Briefly, just with, with what we just went through, we have about one hundred and twenty-seven approved positions in community development. Hundred and eleven are filled right now, two are unfunded. I'm not going to go through these numbers, but these are our performance metrics for the overall agency. So you can see what we're able to do with the resources we're provided as far as doing the people's business out in the community and making sure we're building our community strong and safe. Recommend the new programs. You've heard us talk about instituting the third-party vendor credit card fees so that we do not have to have a budget line item as it relates to that. To give you a sense of scale, this particular calendar year, we were budgeted eleven thousand five hundred dollars for credit card fees, and we've already gone in excess of forty-one thousand as it relates to expenditures in this particular item. So it's, to me, it's, it's, it's very crucial that we get this instituted because as we go more online with our business, that number's going to increase substantially. So, this is a, a crucial item for us as far as maintaining our revenue. Another idea that we are, would like to bring forward with the board is the Institute of Technology Fee to help us in working with information services to go more online and have more virtual government services that we can assist in, in providing to our customers. We would like to create a standard reserve for the zoning signs. This past year, you approved an increase to the zoning signs. I'd like to do a standard reserve on it so the revenue that gets generated stays within the standard reserve, and we never have to come back to the Board of Commissioners for money again, since we will be able to manage that and then increase the sign fees if we see the revenue not meeting our, our needs. And then lastly, you heard me mention about the certification program for construction inspectors who obtain multiple certifications. Big picture challenges. Unfunded mandates that come down from the federal and state government impact community development substantially. After renovation that we're going through right now, we will be pretty much at capacity. So if there's any other growth within the agency, we would have to work with property management to find innovative solutions through either new space or satellite offices or some other idea on how we can meet the growing needs of the agency. Our vehicle fleet is aging, and we appreciate all the work that fleet management does to help us out with that. But it is, it is something that the board needs to realize is not just a community development problem, but one that cuts across all of the agencies here in Cobb. And then finally, just trying to make sure we're leveraging technology, expanding our, our, our e-government platforms, and trying to do as much as possible to, to get our operations out there digitally so that people can get, get the, the county business done without coming in physically to see us. So to summarize everything, the FYI team proposed, that was approved, is about ten million dollars. And you can see the capital operating and personnel request that brings it up to a little bit over eleven million dollars. And with that, sir, the community development team is here to answer any additional questions that you may have, and we appreciate your time and attention.
Very good, very good presentation. Your department and all of your staff are always immediately respond to any requests or from code enforcement to building inspections, and I've thoroughly enjoyed being your liaison commissioner last year and this year and look forward to working with you again.
Thank you, Commissioner, we have a great team, and we're, we're proud of what we do. And I'm, I'm just thankful that we have such a great team who watches my back every day and helps make sure that, that we do what we can for the community.
I just want to say a shout-out to your inspectors and also the fire marshal inspectors because without the efforts that they did, the stadium would not have opened on time. I mean, they did a phenomenal job in getting everything done.
Yes, great job, well, well done, and you've got a great team, and it's a joy working with you. Back to my eight million, brings in fifty, if we gave you sixteen, would you bring in a hundred?
I'm no, I don't make any promises, sir.
Yes, I, I echo all the positive comments that have been shared by everyone with respect to responsiveness, particularly in light of the volume of work that your office does get. If there is any data I was looking for, which I didn't see, was just looking at the staff to caseload ratio for all of the departments. I think everybody there does a phenomenal job with what they have. But I think as we continue to grow as a county and requests continue to grow, it's imperative for us to make sure that the resources are balanced. But with all the resources that you've been giving, you guys have done an outstanding job.
Well, I think they pretty much summed up. You guys are fab, the guys and gals are fabulous, do a great work, and appreciate the really terrific presentation.
Thank you, Chairman.
And we'll see what, as the, as the summer rolls on here, we'll see what this comes to. So thank you for all your time, and then thank your staff too. I think we take a, take a ten-minute break, recess, and we back here at five minutes to three, okay? Okay, we're going to call this back in session for the special called meeting of the work session this afternoon. Tab two of this, or the second part of this, here's, here's what we're trying to do here. Clearly, one of my goals is to make this budget process more transparent and open to the commissioners as well as the public. So we're going through various briefings here so that when we address both the, we address the eighteen budgets, starting, what, in, in July?
Yes, sir.
All right, we won't have to, we won't have to have a crisis brief to get all the programs out. We've had, we've spread them out over four or five months, which allows us more time to address each of the budget areas during a very critical and tough budget year for 2018. But having said that, we do still have some unfunded liability or requirements for fiscal year seventeen. So what I've asked Bill's department to do is to, to take all the unfunded requirements that, that the staff has submitted, as well as the commissioners, and put them on a master list. And then I asked Bill's department to take that list and to narrow it down to something that we can deal with for the remainder of the year. Here's, here's the goal, we have one point five million dollars roughly left to spend for the rest of the year. And we do not want to spend that money until September, unless we have to, because if something emerges in July or August that we didn't know about in June, then we would probably have to tap into reserves to do that, and I do not want to do that. So what I've asked the, the Finance Department to do is come up with a list of projects from the staff that is under, that is under one point five million dollars, and to present that list to the board. And that the list that is being presented to the board comes under the larger list of projects that are not going to, that have not been funded. And what I want the board to do today is take a look at that list, and then let's tweak it. And agree on what it is we think that we should be spending on the one point five million dollars on in September. And when September arrives, if no other emergent requirements come up, then we already have the programs ready to spend the money on in September, and we don't have to go through this process through the summer. So, with that, Bill, I'll let you, I'll let you take the, take the helm and run with the, with the rest of the presentation.
Yes, sir, and just to be clear, I wanted to make sure the commissioner saw that I did give you a copy of the full seven, twenty-seventeen critical needs as submitted by the department, so you do have that as a handout. The presentation will hit it at a summary level. Yes, ma'am, that's exactly the one we're looking, we're talking about. So that is your master list as we move forward for the year. This is not something that Finance necessarily created, this is something, as the chairman said, that we generated through reaching out to departments and getting what their true critical needs are. And again, this is just the critical needs to get them through seventeen. The master list, we did happen to, or also include the eighteen impacts for those items that do have eighteen impacts. The chairman referred to the one point five million dollars, that's the amount of fund balance that we currently have available in the general fund, and that's what we email to you each and every Board of Commissioners meeting, so you know what you're voting on and what impacts of fund balance would be generated through the agenda items that you possibly approving. So that's where those numbers come from. But as we go through the slides here, I want to show you the very first slide. This is a summary by department that was submitted, and this is general fund only. So you can see, we just, just said we had one point five available for the rest of the year. The critical needs that were identified by the departments is over seven million dollars. And the list of the departments are broken out here, you have the detailed version in front of you identifying specific- You have the detailed version in front of you identifying specifically what those needs comprise of, but here it is by department. And then as we move forward, what we were asked to do is get with the departments, talk to them as well as the county manager and chairman about what the critical needs are and put together a recommended list. As, I'll walk through this recommended list here briefly, but what we tried to do here is identify the critical needs and still provide you some cushion as we move through the summer months in case there is an emergency that comes up. But as the chairman said, if everything goes smoothly, we could identify possibly additional dollars in September that we could look to address some further needs if possible, but you would have the master list available to make those decisions. Okay, so just to run down the critical needs list, we have an economic development department request of $42,000. This is to create a CID, there is a potential, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Bill. You got a question, Commissioner Burrow?
Yeah. Do you want us to ask the departments as you go?
That is up to you, however you'd like to handle it. We can go through the recommended list or we can just talk about the, if you want to address any specific departments. Most of the departments are here to answer those questions if I cannot answer them.
Dana, in your presentation, what is the citizen engagement program? We didn't, did we talk about that?
Do you want me to get that? That is, that is just the uniforms for the Cobb 101, is that correct, Dana?
For the what?
Cobb 101.
Cobb 101, go ahead.
That's operating money for the new Cobb 101 Citizens Government Academy that we are working right now as the entire management team to implement on behalf of Cobb County to help citizens become educated about Cobb County services.
Okay, but is that 2,000 and then the other 106,000 for vehicles in your fees? In your revenue, in your own budget?
Part of the budget presentation.
That was part of his presentation, but those were currently unfunded.
Right.
He had, he had not got authorization for those at this time, which is why they're on this list as well.
But he has the money to do it?
No.
No, he does not have the budget to do that, not yet.
Okay.
Sure, Commissioner Hott.
Bill, so we have this big long list, but what I'm understanding is what you're going to show us is you've taken items off of this list and you're going to tell us which ones you think that we need.
That is correct. And this, this is, the recommended list, again, comes from working with the departments and the county manager.
Have you sent us this list yet or are we going to get it?
Yeah, you have it electronically, but I wanted to make sure you had a copy in front of you in case you had additional.
Well, we have this one, is this the recommended list or is this?
That is the total list and the recommended list is in the presentation that we're going to go through.
Oh, okay, right.
And you should have both of those.
Yeah, I have the presentation, so it's inside that.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
It is the last two slides of the presentation.
So go ahead and do the recommended, your recommended list and then we'll get into the general discussion. We can start going back to the critical needs list
Absolutely.
and associate it with your proposed list.
Absolutely, okay. So we have $42,000 for a contract with the firm to create a CID. There is a potential that the county could recruit some of those fees as the CID is created. We have part-time security officers for two government service centers.
First of all, where is the CID going to be created?
This is in, this would be in South Cobb.
Okay, where the special service district is in addition to that or no?
I can let the commissioner answer that if she'd like.
This is in Mableton. This is outside of the special service district.
Okay, as I said, part-time security officers for two government service center locations. This is for hours from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We have, and I will reiterate this because Eddie's told me repeatedly, this is his highest priority. I know he's mentioned it to everybody repeatedly, cybersecurity services. This is to, this would be a reoccurring cost, but it'd be $350,000 to enter into a contract with the firm to provide cybersecurity. And this would be a reoccurring cost each and every year as we move forward. Library contracts and maintenance agreements, this is contracts and maintenance agreements they currently already have in place. This is basically a sunk cost that we know that they're going to have to pay for. Because we were directed to have a flat budget as we moved into '17, they did not get the additional funds needed to cover those costs. But these are contracts that were approved in FY '16 that have a reoccurring impact into '17. So this is basically a sunk cost already, so this would be giving them budget to address this cost that they're going to have to pay out.
Contracts and maintenance for what libraries? You got to give us more description here.
Sure, and this, I believe this is county-wide, this is for library and materials. So this is the digital aspect. So this is contracts that the board approved in '16, but we did not, were not able to address their budget needs in, as they, a full-year impact as we adopted '17.
Does it include leases? Where we lease property for libraries?
This, this is materials.
Materials, okay.
Excuse me.
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, if this is associated with a contract, what's the impact if we don't?
We would have to address it through cleanup authority. Basically, if another department had savings, we could address it through cleanup authority at the end of the year or if they had savings in another line, we could address it through that means as well. But this was part of their critical needs because they know this is trending above their budget and they really have no control over it at this point since the contract has already been agreed to. Services are being provided.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the bottom line is the board approved it.
That is correct.
So that means that we intended to pay for it, right?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I'm just checking here, I thought I might have missed something.
No, okay. And then we have medical examiner, one new medical examiner and one new investigator. This would be a small impact in '17 as we go through the hiring process and then a full-year impact in 2018. Then we have some operating costs that would be related to those positions. Okay, and the next line is police, this is overtime related to the Braves. We currently have a zero amount in there, but if you'll notice on your requested list is 935,000 in FY '17. What we're proposing is to continue to monitor this. Right now, we're seeing significant savings in personnel, but we would like to, the ability to address this through cleanup authority at the end of the year. We do know this is a sunk cost, we just don't know exactly what that cost is going to be yet as we're still early in the process. We do have an estimate of about 11,000 per game, but we are monitoring that situation as we move forward. And what we would like to do is we know there's going to be some additional dollars there, but we want to make sure that, you know, one, either we can cover it through the existing budget that we have in place or we can do it through cleanup authority. But either way, we know there's additional costs here. It's just whether there's an immediate budget need at this time is a little too early to tell, but by the end of the year, we'll have a very good idea of where we're headed.
Yeah, let me just kind of expand on that. Part of the reason that we don't know the exact number is because as we go through the season, we continue to reduce the number of officers. We started with 60, we're now down to 29 and continuing to tweak it. And one of the other things is, it was, the assumption was made that it was all going to be overtime. Well, what some of the officers have figured out is like if they need, say, a Monday and Tuesday off and they don't have any more vacation time, they get those days off by volunteering to work regular pay on Saturday and Sunday. So the 900,000 that Bill talked about was pure overtime times the 60 positions. So we're down to 29 and we also have, we're getting savings because it's not all overtime.
That is correct and we still have, you know, we do have some vacancies as police was funded at 50% vacancy. We'll have some savings there as well. But again, there is an increased cost here. We're just want to make sure we have a good number, a good handle on how to address that as we move through the year.
But we should have an idea by now of a ROM for that, shouldn't we?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we're looking at, say, I mean, there's going to be an increased cost for sure, but because of vacancies and the timing of filling vacancies and things of that nature, there will be a savings in police's personnel budgets. What we're anticipating now is maybe something closer to 400,000 versus the full 900,000 as we move forward as kind of a placeholder. But, you know, we're still pretty early into the season and like Commissioner Hott said, we have adjusted the number of personnel on site and how that's being accounted for versus overtime versus straight salary or hourly pay, that will also have an impact.
And we're going to, we're going to know a whole lot after the month of June because in June,
Absolutely.
the Braves are actually home 18 out of 21 days. And I actually have a meeting with Milton and the sheriff next week or the week after to talk about the sheriff using some of their extra personnel to kind of help so we're not having to pay overtime because we've got a lot of officers that are kind of maxing out on hours. So it's, this first season is kind of a moving target
Right.
as JD kind of refines and it kind of tightens and tweaks the transportation plan.
Okay, well, the only reason I'm concerned is it's going to be a six-figure amount.
Yes, sir, it will be.
And on the bottom here, you have, out of the $1.5 million you've accounted for, actually, it's going to be another 30,000 for the sheriff's ammo that I asked you to put back in later after the chart. So there's going to be roughly about 700,000 or 650,000 that we haven't accounted for, okay?
Yes, sir.
And that might be eaten up by the police.
Yes, and that's, that's the key is that this would be charged to police's personnel budget and right now, we're trending below budget. So even with the additional overtime, we think we may be able to absorb the vast majority of this increase.
But the point I'm making here is that we have accounted for $839,000 on this chart.
That's correct.
That doesn't include the overtime for the police.
That is correct.
So that may eat up the rest of the, I'm not saying it will, okay?
Right, I hear you.
I just want to be very conservative here.
Absolutely.
I don't want people to come back, you know, the board to come back and say, okay, we got 650,000 to play with here. The answer is, no, we don't.
Sure, and what we can do is we can even continue to provide updates as we move through the year because like Commissioner Hott said, with it being a moving target and the personnel being adjusted, we can continue to provide you updates of how that's trending each and every month as we close out. As he said, once we close out June, we'll have a really good picture of where that's going to head. But as a placeholder right now, we're using a conservative number of about 450,000. That's just a ballpark as we, as we move forward, but once we finish June, we'll be able to really give you a very solid number on that.
Okay.
And I think the other, the other part that Bill mentioned there too was that it depends on how quickly we bring on new officers because right now, those vacant slots are funded at 50%.
Right.
And if, and if we go through the entire baseball season with X number of positions at 50%, that's not factored into this 400,000.
Correct.
So there's additional savings where the police budget may have accounted to have 640 sworn officers at full pay, but we have, say, 40 or 50 that are not position-filled. They're only, they're actually only going to be funded in the budget at 50%. And so that money, if they're not there, then that money becomes available to go towards the 400,000.
But the difference is, is we're already spending some of this money.
That is correct, but we're using savings in other areas to address it right now.
Oh, really? You have more buckets?
No, no, this is the savings in police personnel. As Commissioner Hott said, due to the timing of vacancies, we've generated savings. So let's say we had a police officer leave today and it takes, you know, a month to fill that position. Well, that position may have been budgeted to be filled for 100% of the year. So that month where that officer was not currently working is savings that would stay within the budgets that we're going to be able to use to address this.
Okay.
But the key here is that there will be an 18 impact and that will have to be addressed because when we do the budget adoption, we would still budget for vacancies at 50%, but we would need to address this in 18 as a reoccurring line item as a, whether.
So what is the current bill so far since April 14th?
I do, I do not have that currently, I can get that for you today, though.
Well, the board would probably like to know because that's what's going to go in there right now.
Well, but remember, you've got to keep in mind that on April 14th, we had 60 officers out there. We now are operating with 29.
I get that, but we've already paid for that.
Right.
All right.
But for FY '18, in budgeting, you're not going to budget for 60 officers.
I'm not worried about '18, I'm worried about '17.
Okay.
And right now, we have spent some of that money.
Yes, sir, we have. And again, the only reason that that hasn't become an issue because, as you know, it was not part of the adopted '17 budget for that overtime or that additional cost. Due to vacancies and savings in personnel, specifically in the police budget, we've been able to absorb that without having a big concern. The plan would be is to just continue to monitor that and hopefully we can still absorb the vast majority. There, there may be at the end of the day, like we said, talked about in September, we have to come back and ask for, you know, $200,000, $300,000 to adjust that, but that would be something we would know as, once we close out June. So I just want to put this on here as recommended and we put the amount at zero for now, but we want to put it on everyone's radar is that we know that there's a cost out there. What that cost is going to be because this is our first season and we continue to adjust staff, we don't have that hard number for you yet.
All right, well, I need to know how much we have paid
Sure.
since we had the spring training game through tonight.
Absolutely.
Because that's, that's a cost that we didn't budget for.
Absolutely.
And we're paying it, so you can talk about all the savings you want to. The bottom line is the board handles all programs. So we're not, we're not going to get, you know, public safety specific here.
Right.
If there's ways we can save money, that doesn't mean the public safety gets that money. It means the board decides where that extra money goes.
Understood.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Because we have this whole list to deal with too. And I want to make everybody understand here is that whatever savings we can achieve through the rest of the year, they will go to address some of these programs on this list.
Absolutely, which is, which is again, why I wanted to make sure you saw it on the recommended.
Okay.
We know this is an issue and we need to account for it in some way, just not knowing the exact dollar amount at this time.
Correct.
Okay, moving down, we have senior services, billiard tables for the centers, sheriff. We have weapons, car equipment, body armor. And then I know you just asked to add the ammunition back, which was an additional 35,000, which is on the, the full list that you have in front of you. But that was the recommended list with the 35,000, you're roughly at, you know, let's say, let's call it 870 and change. So out of the 1.5, so you still have roughly $600,000 left over that we would be able to go through the summer months.
Minus the police.
Minus the police.
Minus the police.
But that would, and then remember that what we talked about is you have $1.5 million for fund balance, but we still have roughly 900,000 in undesigned contingency, which is part of that. So that's, that's something that we also have to address there as well.
The $900,000?
Yes, sir. That, that's part of the adopted budget each and every year. We always start off with a million dollars in undesigned contingency for emergency situations. We've only used, we've used less than $100,000 of that to date. Typically, we, we very rarely go into that unless there's something that comes up that needs immediate action. But again, that would be funds that would be available, so you have the 1.5.
So we haven't tapped into the reserves this year?
No, sir.
We're actually building onto the reserves, right? That's why it had been budgeted?
I'm sorry?
We're actually increasing our reserves?
Um, we, the reserve percentages stayed the same, but the dollar amounts have gone up. So we have 9% reserve as policy. We have a 3% economic contingency reserve and we have a 3% title ad valorem contingency.
So this 900,000 is above and beyond?
That is above and beyond that, yes, sir. This is part of the annual adopted budget. We always set aside $1 million called undesigned contingency. The board would have the ability to come back and make.
So we can take, we can take projects off this list and decide how we're going to spend that in September too?
That would be budgeted money that would be available, yes, sir.
Or, Mr. Chairman, the, the 2 or 3 or 400,000 that Bill's talking about with the stadium could conceivably come from undesigned contingency and never touch the 1.5 million.
That is correct, that's another way to go to, yes, sir. So, but that, that is the total, that is the total available.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
Bill, I'd like to understand a little bit more about the reserve percentages.
Yes, ma'am.
We have an additional 3% for economic contingency and then we have the 3% for the ad valorem tax.
Yes, ma'am.
What has been the history of our percentage?
Actually, we've always had the 9% reserve policy as far back as I can remember. What we had, what we did install is when the birthday tax changed and we began collecting the title ad valorem tax instead, we, at that point, we had a tremendous influx of revenue. So we decided to set aside 3% because we knew that was going to be more of a bell curve and start to come down, which it has. And we set that aside to help smooth out that decrease in revenue.
Okay.
And we're getting, we're starting to get into that area where we need to have that as part of discussion and I know that's something we've discussed with the county manager as well. The economic contingency was something we set aside as we started to come back from the recession. The key there is because we went into recession with very strong fund balance, we were able to absorb that. But that was something that was kind of, that was more of a recommendation from the ratings, rating agencies as we went into that, is to maybe go ahead and set aside something above and beyond the policy reserve of 9%. So if we did have another downturn of the economy, that would be able to soften the blow, maybe loss of property taxes or loss of other revenues as we, as we suffered through a recession or something along those lines.
Okay, so a couple of follow-up questions to that. The strong fund balance that you said we had prior to the economic downturn, what percentage were we operating at?
Um, I would have to go back and look at what the available fund balance was, but we did have, at one point, it was, it was pretty significant. I'd have to go back and look, get the exact dollar amount, but the 9% policy was what we had in place.
So you didn't have beyond 9% at that time?
Uh, I believe at one point, we had an additional 1% just as a buffer, but that was it. We didn't have anything specifically identified as economic reserves or title ad valorem or anything of that nature. But the policy's been 9%. I believe for a while, we were up to 10% as just a little bit of a buffer for, for a reserve.
Okay, and then when was the title ad valorem tax enacted? Was that '14?
I want to say it was, but I would, I would want to go back and check, yeah.
Okay, and, you know, as you acknowledge, going back and revisiting that, these are, this is significant dollars that are being squirreled away.
Sure.
And I don't know if the same policy implications are in place today that were there back then.
And just to give you an idea of what the 3% is, it's roughly $11 million. Each of those 3% reserves is roughly $11 million.
Both $11 million?
And you're going to see that coming to play when we start putting out the draft 2018 budget, Commissioner?
Okay.
You see the implication of that, the need to smooth that out because that's a significant reduction in revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and just to add to that, we, you know, we continue to monitor that and, for example, we're looking at, you know, a significant decrease in the title ad valorem tax this year alone and we anticipate that trend continuing into '18.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't there, also didn't the legislature pass a change to the title ad valorem taxes passed session?
Yes, I believe so. And what we've seen though is a lot of the other counties that we've met with discussing this issue, they didn't have the tremendous influx of revenue that we did at the early onset and they've seen their declines basically from a, starting at a lower point and continued to decline just like ours is. The only positive for us is that we have a lot of, you know, uh, a lot of sales, of car sales in the area. So we, we had a, a bigger influx of those.
Right, because the big difference was when you got rid of the birthday tax, which was an annual pay, the, at title ad valorem was a one-time.
That is correct.
And then you don't pay it again. And, and they, they didn't equal out.
That, that is correct. We, we did have, I think it was up to sixteen million of additional dol, sixteen million of additional revenues those first couple of years. And now it's, it's dwindled down significantly.
Right. I remember when we put it in place.
Yes.
Okay. Another, um, excuse, I'm sorry. Okay, Chairman, I have another question for Bill. Yeah. You know, we've had somewhat of an approach, albeit loose at times with respect to looking at fund balance for one-time costs versus continuing costs. And when I look at, um, the data you provided, a number of the requests are for continuing costs over time.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm concerned about observing some of these as being critical without the measure of the impact that it's going to have on our general fund, i.e. our millage over time.
Absolutely. And, and this would be, if any items were selected to be, to move forward off of this list, they would go to that, uh, email that we send every board of commissioners to show the impact. Uh, the email that we send out, I believe for this meeting coming up tomorrow, shows that one point five is available for fund balance, but roughly three million plus dollars has already been approved by the board for, for eighteen impact items.
So translate that to me, and I'm sorry, I'm not looking at your recent email, but what, what is the millage rate impact for decisions that we've already made?
Well, that, that's the key is that, you know, there's, there's several factors that we would have to consider as we go into eighteen. I mean, you have the digest growth without, without necessarily a millage impact. If, you know, if we kept the millage the same, you had, you still have digest growth that would generate additional dollars. Um, we, we would need to look at where the digest is going to finish as we get the finalized digest for seventeen later this month. In June, I believe it's the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, we get that number. So that'll help us to translate into what our projections are going to be into eighteen. So even if the millage was the same and the digest continued to improve, you're going to see additional dollars there. Dana, Dana's a perfect example of some of the fee structures increases that, that we were able to do last year to help fund some of his needs. So there's, there are, there are options available to us of how we want to address those, but those would be obviously board decisions of how we want to move forward.
Well, I'm trying to, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but from what I understand, there has been, um, an approach to not want to have a tax increase. So even if our digest grows under the same millage rate, that's still considered a tax increase?
Oh, I, I believe that, I believe that the conversation was no millage increase.
No millage increase? Is that what?
Well, my example is, let's say, let's say you have a, you have a salary, you make a hundred thousand dollars a year and you're in the, what, thirty-five percent tax bracket at that, all right?
I wouldn't know.
Okay. Well, let's say hypothetically, that a hypothetical person made a hundred thousand dollars and he was in the thirty-five percent tax bracket. And let's say this hypothetical person received a hypothetical pay raise of fifteen thousand dollars, okay? So he's in the same tax bracket, but he's still paying more money. Is that a tax raise or not? The answer's probably yes, okay? He's paying more taxes, but at the same rate.
Correct.
So.
So that, okay, so with, with that example, what, what, what has been, and maybe I shouldn't put you on the spot.
That's fine. No, you're fine.
But it's been shared publicly, um, you, I'm curious to know your commitment towards moving into next year. Is it not to see a tax increase as far as bringing in more money through our digest or not to raise the millage?
Not to raise the millage rate.
Okay. Okay.
Because we're going to get more, that's why we have to have the three meetings because we're not going to roll the, we're, we're going to propose not to roll the millage rate back.
That is correct.
Okay?
Okay. I appreciate that.
So there will be, there will be more, there'll be more income. And I realize I'm going to have to defend that, all right? But the bottom line is, we have to provide quality services to the county. And my position is that we're not going to provide, provide a budget that does not do that.
Sure.
So there's the reality and then there's the politics. And the reality for me is what do we have, what budget do we have proposed, all right? Do I have to propose, submit to you that provides a continued quality service to the county? And, uh, so that's, that's where we're coming from. Yeah.
But I think Commissioner Cupid raises a good, I'm sorry.
One second. Commissioner Weatherford?
My cue. To Commissioner Cupid's questions, and you and I have had this discussion about the, uh, different reserves. We have a nine percent policy reserve, correct?
Yes, sir.
What is required by state law?
It, I, I would have to get that for you, sir. It's more of, reserve policies are more of best practice than anything else.
I understand.
And that's something that we weigh heavily on as far as when we set aside our reserves is what the rating agencies recommend.
Correct. For the good rates we get where we don't borrow money.
Uh, we've borrowed some this year.
Okay, good.
Not a lot, but we did.
All right. So nine percent is thirty-three million dollars approximately?
Uh, I believe it's closer to fifty, I, I, fifty-two million at the end of the day.
I thought you just said three percent was eleven.
Yeah. Okay. You're, I'll trust your math better than mine right now.
How many CPA agrees? What? Sorry?
I'm going to trust your math right now.
Okay.
But, but yes, we have a nine percent reserve versus a three percent economic contingency, so.
All right. So we have thirty-three something in, in policy. And then we have the TAVT, which can fluctuate. That's another eleven million.
Yes, sir.
And then we have an economic development con, uh, contingency of three percent. Now, that's fifty-four million.
There you go. That's where I was going with my fifty million.
Okay, so you got there before, without adding them up.
I just saw that number.
So we have fifty-four million reserves and that's not counting the fund balance?
That is correct. The fund balance is the one point five that we talk about.
Okay. And, you know, we've got, to me, we've got eleven million to play with at least with the three cent, three percent economic development contingency.
And here's, and here, and I hear where you're going. And here, this is one of the questions that I'll be asking next week in New York. What is it we can do where we don't jeopardize a triple-A bond rating? And, and we just remember, we just came out of a really bad recession.
Sure.
And those who, who handled that better than others had the reserves. It's like the famous fire department. Why do I need to spend one million dollars on a fire truck? Well, when your house is on fire, now you know why.
Right.
So, but I'll be asking that question. They're, they're legitimate questions. They're good questions. But I need to be asking these guys in New York, uh, the ten percent, um, you know, borrowing ten percent against our, our, uh, our, our equity.
Legal debt.
Our assets. This question, these are questions that we'll all ask next week in New York.
But I, but I think Commissioner Cupid kind of touched on it, and this has been my issue over the, the time I've been up here. That's all well and good to say we have some extra money to spend. But historically, what this board has done, which is a lot of reasons why I vote against it, is they take one-time money, which reserves is one-time money and they, and it is applied to a recurring cost. That is where we get ourselves into trouble. I have no problem with taking one-time money and buying fire engines or buying police cars, one-time expense. But what has happened in the past is, is commissioners have seen dollars and wanted to put things in place and it's been recurring costs. And that's why we get into the situation we're looking at with this eighteen budget is because a lot of the, a lot of the things that have been put in place are recurring costs with not really any discussion as to how are we going to pay for year after year after year? And, and, you know, the last year's budget drew heavily from the fund balance and, and drew it down.
And I agree. That's why this list here, I don't, I forget on the other sheet, are there any recurring costs on another one? No, on the second page of this one. No, no, not that page. This, this, the, the chart you have on here, okay? All right.
Yes, sir.
Go to the previous page. Okay, there is, there are recurring costs on this sheet. That's right. And that's Commissioner Roth, Commissioner Cupid's point, which is why I'm doing exactly what I'm doing. All right? We, whatever we agree on here is going to be, we agree on it, which is why I'm having this discussion. If we choose not to do, to spend the money in seventeen on some of these programs, it's because we've had a full layer of discussion on it. We understand the impact and consequences of it, and then we vote on it. Which is why I'm doing it now rather than later so we don't turn into a crisis mode. So, uh, again, I'm just telling people, I'm showing you all our cards. This, this right here that you see, this is a straw man that I've asked Bill and Mr. Hosack to put together so we can have a starting point for discussion. If you think there's a better way we can spend the one point five million dollars, that's why we're having this discussion. Okay? And I really mean that. I'll, uh, there's one thing on here I'm going to defend to the death. Okay? But the rest, but that's just my voice right now, all right? So again, let's not, we're not closing the discussion here. This is the starting point for discussion. And it gets to both points on both ends of the table here.
I do want to add that a couple of the items on here that have reoccurring costs, the reason that they made this list as a starting point for discussion is that they limit our exposure in other areas, such as cybersecurity.
Well, one of them is, is that we voted on it in sixteen.
You're right.
And we just didn't fund it, which I, makes no sense to me. If you, if the board votes on it, that means you voted to spend the money on it.
But basically, but basically what they've asked the department to do in that case is that they approved it, but at the end of the day, they were asked to absorb it into their budget through other means, basically find reductions elsewhere and just absorb it.
Cannibalism.
Exactly. So, well, but again, we'll have, these things will come out.
No, ma'am, that, that's the library contracts and maintenance is what was asked to be, be absorbed into the budget.
Okay.
But the cybersecurity, the reason we started that as a, just a discussion point is that limits our exposure in other areas. So we felt that was a priority. But again, it does have reoccurring costs.
I get that point, but again, the board voted on it. To me, if the board votes on it, then that's something we have to do.
Understood.
There's no sense voting on it if we're, if the, if it's not, if it's in the budget, all right? And the board says to vote on it, and then we go back and tell the people, yeah, the board voted on it, but we're going to do it this way. That's not the intent of the board.
Right. And, and again, that, that was, yeah, I think it was Commissioner Cupid's ask initially to provide the update of, hey, this is what we've already approved and, you know, we get that out for the board meeting. So you can see that as, before we vote in years past, that always hasn't been clear and that's been a, a concern is that we take them as one-off items and we approve it, but then we don't, you know, we, when it comes budget time, we, we forget that we've approved this or we need to make sure we include it in the budget. So we have to keep that running total now of anything that was either appropriated through fund balance or has an eighteen impact. So we have that as our placeholder to include in the budget. But you, also for you all to know, this is what we've already approved and basically obligated us to increase the eighteen budget by.
Okay. So we're good. All right.
Okay. Any questions for me, the departments? Anything off the list that we could have a department come up and address?
So for the straw man, the straw man?
Here's my challenge. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Are you, are you going to go through the recommended list by department?
I, I did. I, I finished, uh, I think we, we did that. We talked about police overtime, senior service pool, our billiard tables, sheriff's weapons. Did I, did I not?
There's, there's another list you gave us right before this. Uh, this is not the one that's on the, uh...
Okay, well, go back to the very first page.
Yes, sir.
All right, this is, no, 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 I'm talking about on the, on the, on the recommended list. There you go.
There you go.
All right. So we got, we discussed this page.
We talked about, talked about that.
Now you've got to go to the second page and walk that list.
Okay.
And we stopped at the police overtime.
We stopped at police overtime. So now we have senior service billiard tables for the senior centers.
And I will defend that one. I have made a, I have gone to all the senior centers and you're not, it's like, it's amazing what you think is important. And the senior centers, this is the issue for the men, okay? Let, well, let me just finish here. Don't, don't jump on me here, okay? I'm just saying, I've gone there, I've gone in the back, I had shared cookies and, and discussions and billiard tables, among other things, are really important to the seniors. The other, the other items are programs, certain programs, but they all come with recurring costs. So I decided we're going to put that on there, all right? And there are some other, uh, issues that were high-cost items and I decided we'd defer those to. So of all the issues I heard at the senior center, this was the cheapest option that stayed within a non-recurring cost. That's why this is on the list.
And I, I have a question. Is this throughout and how many tables and which senior centers?
All of them.
Cause I was, Thursday, I was at the East Cobb Senior Center with Okinawa Slim, shooting pool. And he, nobody said anything about needing new tables.
And every time I go over there to the Lockheed, uh, Tuesday luncheon, I go in the back and that group of guys is yelling and there's a lot of people there.
Really?
Yes.
I'm speaking to them next week, so I will say.
Probably be at our neighborhood centers. Not our congregant ones, but our neighborhood, so at least three.
Okay.
And they have been refurbished to the point of not refurbishing anymore. They, it's time for them to be replaced.
Okay.
It's like cars. It's like replacement vehicles.
Are any going to these Cobb Senior Center on this list?
Yes.
This is for all the tables?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
But again.
They go on the West Cobb?
Yes, they are.
It's your group, it's your group commissioner that started it. So, yeah. The West Cobb group was the one who started championing these.
I realize you were going to take this, but that, look. These are, these are seniors, all right? And they don't complain. They just state facts. And if you look at some of those tables, there's no way those balls on some of those tables don't keep rolling back and forth because they're already slanted.
Right. I'm going to call John Huey and ask him.
So it's, it's kind of like what I heard in some of the discussions, like we're picking on some people here. Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm taking these people around me because I heard what they're saying. And of all the things that I heard from them, this was the least expensive, all right? It gets the biggest return because it shows the people at these centers that were listening to them. We hear them.
Yes, sir.
I am very willing to support that as long as other commissioners can be just as sensitive to the broad constituent requests and pick, you know, I, I don't know, you know, I, I don't like to ever pit departments against other departments because everybody has their constituency and their interests, but, you know, when I, when I see the word critical, I, and this is not what comes to mind.
Well, I guess that's a relative term to some of these people that are out there that are voters that pay their taxes.
I agree, but I just, you know, with a lot of the wear and tear that a lot of our facilities have.
I know.
Yeah, I'm just.
Why is, let me give you a great example, which I think is something we all hear all the time, but goes to my point. Mowing the medians.
Yes.
Why is that critical? Why is a grass that's a foot high, how does that impact the county? But we're going to, but, but we've got in the two thousand and eighteen budget, mowing the medians, they're going to contract for all of them. Because I hear the commissioners, and I hear it over and over again, so to me, that means it's critical.
Yeah, and maybe, eh, eh, you know, what you're getting at is what's the policy justification behind these? Because it could be, it could vary, you know, grass as opposed to, you know, body cameras, you know, somebody could say what's important. But also there's, there's a connotation that's, you know, associated with appearance of things. When people drive through the county and they see trash and they see grass that's not mowed, it gives off an appearance that makes the county not look as welcoming as it could. And it doesn't reflect the county's expectation of expect the best immediately visually, you know, which is why it, it does rank very high. I think people complain about what they see. But again, I'm not here to pitch one department over another, but it's just this, and this is what makes this very difficult. I mean, I applaud what you're doing. This is, what you're doing is presenting a lot of firsts for us. And to even have this conversation, I think, is a significant milestone. But it's very challenging and I, I'm sorry, I just want to go back to Commissioner Weatherford's observation. I feel it's very unfortunate that we are finding over one point five million, but there's potentially over fifty million dollars that could be at play. I mean, um, it, it makes, it, it makes prioritizing this almost unnecessary and, and just like.
And I, and, and let me go to New York and come back with answers for you and then we'll, because again, this is an ongoing discussion.
When are you going?
Next week. Next week. No, no, we, we don't have to vote on this until, we don't vote this until August or September. This is just, I'm just showing you that, I'm trying, it's a placeholder. I, I remember this morning, I said it was a placeholder. If we decide to make decisions today, then we can put that in there. But this is, that was a strictly thinking ahead. But this is a discussion point for how we might want to spend that one point five million dollars. But there is no emergent requirement to vote on this tomorrow after, tomorrow morning. There is not. We can continue this discussion because we do, we're not going to be spending this money until September anyhow. All right? Because it allows us, in case we have some kind of an, an emergency come up, we know we have one point five million plus the nine hundred thousand dollars. So I'm just, again, trying to get out in front to show people what's out there. And then more importantly, it allows us to have this open discussion about that. Look, if we don't vote the forty-two thousand dollars, uh, uh, you're still going to get a Christmas card from me. I'm just here to defend, you know, one aspect of the people who voted for you. A lot of it's a no, that's serious. This is how you, these are all tough questions. They're very difficult questions, all right? But the only way you get the right answer is to put it all out there and have a discussion about it and then work on it. So I hope that there's no message here that, you know, don't, don't, don't go after Chairman Boyce's billiard tables. No, these are just proposals that are here out there, okay?
I appreciate that.
Okay. Commissioner Burrow?
With respect to the one point five million for maintenance and mowing, to me, that is critical to have it contracted in all four districts because of the aesthetics and the, um, community pride that we need to have in Cobb when we're compared to other cities and counties surrounding us that are pristine and immaculate. But the other side of that too is, um, we have weed ordinances and high grass ordinances and we're not in compliance and the medians, and right away, and we, we make our residents be in compliance.
Well, I want to know that I hear all of you because it's in the budget for next year, okay? For all four districts contracted. All right? But, but, but here's the, here's the hard question we kind of have sometimes. If it boiled down to one point five million dollars for the contracted services or the one point five million dollars for Sunday bus service, which one would you choose, all right? which one would you choose, alright? And that's where you get into decisions, what's critical. Those are the kind of discussions that are really hard, because they're both really important. And the only way you get to that is to have these kinda talks. So, uh, sure.
Just one, I noticed, you know, you, you said you added ammo back on here for the sheriff department?
It, it is not on the presentation, and Chairman asked me.
But I know, he asked.
Right.
But I was just noticing that, uh, body cameras are forty thousand dollars.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that's critical.
Sure.
And maybe they've got some pool tables at the jail, they could give the senior center, and we could get the body camera.
That's why we have this discussion, that's why we, where's, where's, uh, Mr. Beck?
There's Sheriff's back there, I think, yeah.
Now you get your chance.
Then you don't get the body cameras, Sheriff.
Neil, you're supposed to be helping me here, buddy. You're my friend!
I don't know, we'll try. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Attorney, Mr. County Manager, my first time up here while you're there, congratulations again. Well, I'm here. Where's, where's the money?
I was so happy when I saw all these items on here for the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Clearly, it was insufficient.
Well, how about finding it for the sheriff's office, okay?
What, pool table?
No, uh, you know, uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity, uh, we were kinda told a, a little bit of a curve, but I think we got caught up on it this morning, I think, uh, uh, Finance was able to give, uh, the information to staff this morning, and at around nine-thirty, and they were able to, uh, converse with me over the telephone back and forth, so, I think we've got a handle on what, what the issue is, but, uh, I don't know of anything that we, that I can't do without, you know, uh, I think everything is very critical, and I, and, and, and Lord knows, I, I wanna, I wanna be a team player, I wanna participate, and, and work with you folks, and do all I can to, uh, so that we can work together, but, uh, I, I know, and I think, one of my staff members, uh, I think was told that the, uh, medical, one point four million was gonna be taken care of, is that correct? Or someone, that's one of the issues we, you know, I have no control whatsoever who comes in there, or how much of that medical. We try to do the best we can, we got to, we have the, uh, uh, the best, uh, medical staff that, that, that you, you have. Uh, and, uh, and not only does it, uh, look after us when we get, uh, in court, when we have to go to court because of an inmate telling us that we didn't provide them the right kind of, uh, uh, medical treatment, matter of fact, uh, I'm going to Superior Court in the morning, I'm a witness in the case. Thank goodness, uh, Wellstar is still in the case, but, uh, we were, we were thrown out of the case, or, uh, put out on so, so, some rejudgment. Uh, so that's just an example of why it's very important that we get, do the best medical service we can, cause the law, the Constitution just says that we will give that, the, those inmates, they, they have a right to the same, uh, uh, quality or type of, uh, uh, me, uh, medical treatment as if they would be out. Now, you know, and I know, most of them don't, they don't go to the doctors, uh, they're in bad health when they come to us. Uh, but, but needless to say, we still, we are still responsible for them, once they're in my custody, and I don't have any choice, and so, we have a great opportunity, an outstanding, uh, program with Wellstar, they do a great job. We have searched over the years to see if there's a better deal, a better deal out there, and, and no. Uh, every conference that I go to, and I don't go to a lot of them, but when I do, uh, these private, uh, and I, I have a lot to, you know, I believe in dealing with government and private, uh, businesses working together, and I, and, uh, and I think that's what we got to some extent with Wellstar, but, uh, I deal with, I, I converse with Will, with, uh, private contractors, medical contractors, uh, give them an opportunity, uh, they wanna know, could, uh, they look at our, our staff and just, or, 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 our, the way we operate, to see if they can come and, uh, and bid, put a bid in. Uh, but once they come up and see the, the inmates we have, and the type of in, uh, type of, uh, and what we expect of them to do, I can hardly get them a, a bid out of them. And the ones that do bid, and I can give you an example, Fulton County, DeKalb County, Gwinnett County, they're up in the double-digit on, uh, and they use outside private contractors. Uh, they, 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 it's anywhere between fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen million dollars a year for medical. And, uh, we, we, we keep it down around the single, single digit, which, uh, it's a lot of money, but it is, it is what it is, and it's, uh, and it's good to know that when we are, when I, when I am sued, and that happens quite often, unfortunately. Uh, but when we get our county attorney, or, or attorneys are able to get us, us, the county, out of the system, out of the trial, out of the judgment, it, it's gonna save in the, in the long run, a lot more money. So that's just one, one, one answer, and I didn't mean to get on a, on a, drawn out there, but, uh...
There are certain things that we just have to do.
Yes, sir, and I wish I could tell you, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be no more than five million dollars, or seven million dollars, but I cannot do that. But I will tell you that our staff, we worked very hard with Wellstar, and they worked very hard with us trying to, uh, over-monitor. Uh, we try to keep, uh, I don't tell them how to, that's one thing, uh, I don't wanna do, and I don't wanna do. I don't want, I don't want them telling me how to run the security of the jail, and I don't want, and I, and I'm not gonna be telling them how to be, be a doctor, or do the medical service, cause that's where, that's when I'm gonna get you, me, you, and the taxpayers of this county in trouble.
Right.
So, that's, so that's something we got to have. So, I, I don't know if it's true, or, or whatever, but I understand that someone made a statement to, uh, Colonel, uh, Allen this morning, that they, they were gonna take care of the one point four, I, may you for that.
We, we recognize it as a requirement, alright?
Okay, alright.
And we still, we still have, uh, three or four months left in the year.
Oh, yes, sir.
But we're not gonna, we're not gonna put you in a corner.
Okay, okay.
Cause I agree with you, uh, Sheriff.
Yeah.
You know, you, you're penny wise and dollar foolish.
Yes, sir, yes.
And it only takes one case where we get this wrong.
Right.
And it makes us seem like miniscule, so...
So, so the other issues, uh, and, and I think we were, uh, told, and I, I don't have a document in front of me yet, or they giving me one, but it's just, Bill, you can, but anyway, I think it's like a hundred and forty-three thousand, or something like that.
These are requested items.
With, with different items there, and, uh, uh, so if you, if you do the one point four, and what we requested, that puts us about one point five thereabout.
We're gonna put the billiard tables under yours, alright?
Yeah.
Just gonna put that under your program.
Well, and we get a little bingo parlor going there, too, and, uh, but it, let's, uh, I've got the, uh, the staff here that deal, has been dealing with each one of these, uh, different, uh, uh, items, and, and if you wanna hear from them, and, uh...
Well, that's why I, I made a point of talking to you last week, let you know, cause I saw a lot of the items on here, on our proposed list.
Yeah.
And I thought that, you know, you should at least be aware of them.
And I appreciate you letting us, uh, be up here, and I apologize with, that I wasn't able to get here at one-thirty. Uh, you did get my messages, okay? Uh, but anyway, I'm here to answer any questions, or try to resolve this any way we can.
So the, um, the, the four items we have on here, uh, the weapons, the car equipment, the body armor, and the, and the ammo.
Who wants that? Beck, Chief Beck, you wanna?
I mean... Obviously, would, would be, that would be something that if we could fund in, in September, you would, that would make you partly happy?
Yes, sir, we're not gonna argue with you.
By the way, and it's one thing they told me, Chairman, uh, when I asked them, it's basically the same thing, and they, they said, there are some things here that we could work, maybe split.
Okay. Or if there was something on the master list, uh, that you thought would be a better priority, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, again, we, we seek the input from the subject matter experts.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, so again, this is a point for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's sort of, people are still getting used to this whole thing about, we have a lot more discussion early in the program.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but that leads to a better product at the end, I believe.
If you give me a chance to introduce the subject matter experts with us, that's okay, Mr. Chairman? And my eyes are red, my allergies are bothering me, and I got dry eyes.
I didn't make it cry.
I, I don't want you to think I was hanging out in the drug lab too long, but, uh, let me introduce some of our folks. We've got Lieutenant Colonel Sonya Allen, she's also an attorney with us, Colonel Robert Willard, who's the Assistant Chief Deputy, and Lieutenant Colonel, I don't know if y'all know him, Robert Quigley. Uh, he's also here.
He's a light Colonel.
Ask the Sheriff.
Okay, nevermind.
He's been a great addition to the Cobb County Sheriff's Office. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman...
Don't rub it in.
If you don't mind if I could go over just some of the critical need list that we had listed, and some of them have carried over to the recommended list. Uh, body armor, um, where about a hundred and fifty pieces will expire by the end of this year, December two thousand and seventeen. Um, so we are in need of body armor, and a hundred and fifty pieces will expire by the December of two thousand and eighteen, will be expired body armor. So, uh, what happened, and why we got in this predicament, is there was a manufacturer defect on about three hundred pieces, it had to be recalled pretty quick and reissued, so that's where we're at with the body armor. The MDCs, the, uh, the, uh, computers inside the cars, uh, three hundred and thirty thousand on the, on the critical need list. We've replaced them out, uh, by a third on replacement, correct, correct, Lieutenant Colonel Quigley? And it's time to replace a third of the existing computers in our cars. SWAT equipment, seventy-four thousand, our SWAT team, uh, I don't know if you're familiar, but our SWAT team does the majority of the entries for the Marietta Cobb Spur and Narcotics Unit, assist all the city police, we work with the county police. Uh, the SWAT team is in need of a wireless headsets for communication, to keep both hands free during certain deployments. That's a communication device, and also gas masks, seventy-four thousand. Tasers, um, a less lethal weapon that's utilized by our deputies. Um, right now, um, out of a hundred and seventy-five deputies assigned outside the facility, of the jail facility, we have sixty that are assigned tasers, we are in need of tasers, less lethal tasers. And so, there's a hundred and fifty thousand that was requested for that, the long-term plan is to, is to issue every sworn deputy a taser, a tool that's needed, uh, in the future, but we know we have to implement this in phases. Uh, body cameras, we are, um, short, in need of replacement, about forty body cameras, and they run about a thousand dollars apiece. I know that all of y'all know that, uh, uh, body cameras, it's, it's an expectation of the public. Uh, we've implemented body cameras probably eight years ago. We started with body cameras that were connected to the shoulder mic, we have tested and been through several generations of body cameras. We think we have a real good body camera with V-View, we've been utilizing V-View for the last five years. Uh, we are short, not all of our deputies outside the jail facilities, we have enough cameras inside the jail facilities to, to, uh, be able to, uh, not have to issue the deputies inside the facilities, we have so many cameras inside the facility, but the ones outside, we're about forty short, which includes replacements, cause they do break. Um, weapons, rifles for deployment. We don't assign every one of our sworn deputies rifles, uh, the ones in court security, we need some rifles that are set strategically placed throughout the courthouse, throughout the courthouse strategically placed, so the deputies can get to it, as well as our investigators, instead, in, in case of an active shooter. So the deputy's not assigned a rifle, but we're, we're in need of fifteen rifles, um, to be able to have for training, and to deploy throughout the courthouse, and for criminal investigations. Car equipment, uh, takes about eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars to equip a car. Uh, we don't have the in-camera, uh, in-car cameras, uh, for our cars, that's the biggest difference between us and the police, cause a lot of our duties are away from a car, so that's why the body cameras are so critical. But a car is eighteen thousand dollars, we have, um, we're asking for eighteen thousand dollars, uh, about six thousand dollars apiece. We have three replacement cars, um, coming in that we won't have any equipment for, because we can't utilize the same equipment in an old Crown Vic, the body styles have changed, things have gotten newer, you have to get different equipment. Some of these Crown Vics are very old, um, and, and some of the cars that we're driving are now Chevrolets also. Um, the ammunition you, you talked about earlier, ammo's critical. I mean, everything we're talking about here is, is critical to daily duties, but the ammo, the state of Georgia, uh, basically placed upon the agencies earlier this year, without much notice of a greater amount of ammo is needed, uh, because we have to qualify with backup weapons, a certain course, as well as rifles and shotguns, so ammo is gonna go up. Um, the Sheriff talked about inmate medical expenses. Mr. Chairman, we're not asking for extra bodies, we're asking to, to fill some of our vacancies also. We are, right now, today, fifty-five deputy sheriff vacancies, um, with the Sheriff's Office, not including the twenty that has not went to the academy mandate training, so you're looking at seventy-five vacancies or individuals that don't have arrest powers. Um, and we're about twenty-one short civilians inside the jail, uh, we're needing, we're losing a lot of good officers. I think y'all heard it earlier today, we're, we're losing a lot of good deputies. Uh, we have been able to find out that between the two and four-year mark, the deputy sheriffs leave us, after we have fully trained them. They will either go to another agency for a career opportunity, they feel is a better career opportunity, or they'll go back into the private sector, we can tell you, um, how good the economy is getting by the vacancies that we have with, with the Cobb County Sheriff's Office. We've asked for a retention and incentive plan, this plan is basically, uh, to help us retain, uh, experienced, trained deputies. And it is a bonus, um, a performance bonus, for them to stay with us and grow with us, and choose us as a career. So we've asked for that, um, everybody that'd be eligible would be, after four years of service, there's certain requirements and guidelines that you would have to meet to, uh, be eligible for this retention incentive, to stay with us, um, all the way up through the rank of major. We just feel we have a lot to offer, um, employees, but we, we are at a point right now, sir, with seventy-five to eighty, not counting the ones that are being deployed, we have some that are gonna be deployed to be on for a while, as well as workers' comp, um, injuries and restricted duty, coming back from workers' comp. So those are the things that we're facing, I know, maybe the Sheriff, I may have said a little bit too much, Sheriff, you didn't,
No, I think you...
You didn't push me, so I'm...
You made, uh, you're on, on target, uh, as he said, talking about the fifty, uh, fifty, fifty-five vacancies. In reality, it's about eighty, eighty-five, when we're looking at, when he talks about the twenty, that's, uh, not mandated yet. There's only certain things they can do, plus the ones that were out on the, uh, deployment. Ones that are, are out, uh, on, uh, on sick leave, or, or medical leave, uh, so, so it's, uh, we're in a bad situation with personnel. I'm very proud of the men and women that, uh, that are working now, they, they, they doing, uh, doing an excellent job, and, I couldn't ask for a better, more dedicated staff, and so, anyway. Uh, anything else, Chief, you wanna talk about that?
Just to let the Commissioners know, we're eight hundred and twenty-two employees, we're the second-largest Sheriff's Office in the state of Georgia, with thirty-four hundred beds at our jail, which is the second-largest jail behind DeKalb. So, uh, we're a very large agency, we're five hundred deputies.
And I do wanna, uh, and to talk about that, uh, the thirty-four hundred beds, thank goodness, we, we don't have that population now, that was projected. And some of the reasons that, that's not, we don't have that, is because, uh, I work in a relationship with the court system. Uh, I get over there and, and moving the inmates in a timely manner. Uh, I was told a few years ago, when I was, uh, uh, having a heart-to-heart discussion with the head of the Department of Corrections, on midnight, on a telephone call around midnight, on Christmas Eve, I think it was, uh, when I had six hundred inmates that belonged to the state, uh, his, his complaint was that, uh, Cobb County was too efficient. Got the inmates, uh, uh, where did it go? And so I said, well, we're gonna continue to be efficient, but you're gonna have to come get those inmates, so since that time, uh, they keep them down to around two hundred or so, and, but, but it's, uh, but, but that's, that's, that reason, uh, the immigration is ice working with us and moving those folks out of our facility, when those cases done, we, uh, we, we, we're doing about all we can do, do to keep that population down. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman?
Um, two things, thanks for being here, Sheriff. Um, with the exception of the, um, incentive, retention, pay, all your other items are one-time monies, they're not reoccurring costs.
Right.
So that's a plus.
You would hope so, on, uh, except for the medical, we hope we don't have that same inmate in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I, I think it was my conversation with Chief Beck this morning and what I was on the medical. But what I was asking, what I was trying to get clarification on was if it was increase in the medical costs from your provider going up or the volume of inmates that you're seeing an increase in care for.
I don't know if he's had a chance to look at it to give you a real good number, but I can tell you one thing would be, I can assure you the inmates that's in our facility now, we, we do everything we can do to get them, get them in and get them out.
Right.
And, and, and the inmates that don't get out, they are in, pretty much, and they are in some pretty bad situation as far as health reasons.
Yeah, and you're also required.
Yes. And trust me, we, if we can get someone out that's got a health issue and we, and the DA, I can work with the judge, judges and the DA, the prosecutor. We go the extra mile and the courts work with us to do home, home arrests and everything such as that.
The medical budget includes mental health and Wellstar officials work with our folks who put together the budget and understand, Ms. Commissioner, that individuals, HIV, pregnancies, TB, dialysis, those kinds of things that individual, if an individual gets shot and they outside and comes to our facility, we have to, with the follow-up care and the hospital bill and those type of things that, that we're dealing with. So it's, it's hard to predict, like the sheriff said, we have an aging population where people are having these addictions. They come in, everybody's got an addiction to something or mental health or, or to where they need to see a mental health provider. So those are the things that we're dealing with inside that facility. And so that here of late has escalated. There's just been some incidents that we can't, but we can't control any of the incidents.
And, and the issue that Wellstar is having, we just had a meeting two weeks ago and with the, with the CEO of Wellstar. And the problem they having with dealing with the nurses, not too many nurses want to work in a jail facility, 12 hours a day or, you know, working 12 hours shifts and whatever. And so they're having a tough time hiring nurses to do the job, so.
Mr. Sheriff?
Thanks, Sheriff. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner, how are you doing, sir?
Good. My understanding, I know you all use a different vendor for your cameras and the price is not a huge difference, but one of the big discussions that the board has gone through with the increased purchase of body cameras for the, the police is the support equipment that goes with it. Because I'm, I'm assuming that you all save.
To back it up, yes, software, yes, sir.
Because that cost is not in here. Because I know that what we were told was that as we added body cameras, we had to add hard drives, storage equipment and all that.
Yeah.
And so my, my concern is that with you using one vendor and the, and the police using another vendor, the systems may not be compatible. And so we're buying, you know, for buying storage capacity, we're buying two different types of storage capacity because, I mean, it would seem to make sense to me that we need to get police and sheriff on the same product.
Yeah, Sheriff, Commissioner, we run about 60 body cameras right now. We store everything locally. And what we found works for us is after a couple of years, we'll pull it off of a live storage and put it on a hard storage device where we can bring it back up later. So currently we're doing okay. We don't have nearly as many cameras in the street because we don't have as many officers in the street actually handling cases like Cobb PD does, so.
Right, but as, but as we move in that direction.
Yeah.
And my concern is before we start moving in that direction and getting you further tied to whatever system it is you're using, it would seem to make more sense to me that we get your folks together with Sharon Stanley and our folks and make sure that, you know, kind of like the 800 megahertz system. I mean, that works so well because it's common to everybody.
Right. In fact, Sheriff's probably nodding her head because we had this discussion about a week ago. So we are looking at that because we want to make sure we can leverage that commonality in what we're doing.
Yeah, because before I would, I mean, before I'd be willing to go forward on body cameras, I would want to know that we had a plan that we were going to be, you know, as a county, we were going to have one system.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, we are working together. We'll continue to do so.
Okay.
I think there's several areas that we can look at. Sam Heaton and Sheriff and I communicate and former, former Chief Hauser on equipment. I think there's several areas that we could probably get together and get more bang for our buck if we ordered more in bulk as far as that goes.
We're going to need to look at every single dollar in 2018. So whatever you can do to work with us and part of it, we really appreciate that.
We definitely will.
Okay, thanks. Well, thank you for your time today.
Yes, sir.
All right, great having you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board on this, on this product? I think what I'd like to do then is we'll just leave this straw man in place, okay? And then let's bring it back again to the board like in August.
Okay.
That should give us time to see if there's any changes. Give some time for the Commissioners to, to mull on it, as I say. And then we can take a look at what the situation is. Does that work for everybody? No, there's no need to, no.
Mr. Chairman, if I could call one thing to the board's attention. I, I think, of course, all these were critical needs. I think that there was one that was probably critical, critical. And that's due to an impending maternity leave situation in Chris, Dr. Gullidge's office. So it might, that might be something that the board would consider advancing to tomorrow's placeholder agenda. Because I think that if Chris, Dr. Gullidge can't move forward.
All right. I, I have no problem with that, but he's going to have to talk to all the Commissioners mucho pronto by tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Well, if we could get Dr. Gullidge to come up, because we've talked about this when we went up to Charlotte. And I thought I saw some emails where all the part-time medical examiners that have been helping you are now kind of qualified as part-time employees or something. Didn't I see that?
Yes, sir. So, hi, everybody.
Thanks for dressing up for us.
It's been a busy day.
He's in black. Come on.
Sorry. So I wear my good pajamas. No, that's okay. So we have two employees at other agencies who work for us occasionally. And by occasionally, I mean we've successfully had that work twice. So it is a very infrequent kind of, of backup for us because there's, there's only two of us. And so right now, Dr. Boggs is in Philadelphia at CME and so it's me. So that's, you get me. So that was, that was what that was.
When did she go out on maternity leave?
She will be looking, her, she is due the beginning of October. She will be stopping doing new cases, probably the middle of August.
So that's really the timeframe that we have to, we need to kind of.
The issue is, is that as a medical examiner, I'm, I apologize.
We're going to bring, we're going to bring it forward.
As, okay.
I was trying to help you here.
Okay, I'll let you.
We're going to bring, we're going to bring forward the, the, both, 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 we're going to bring forward the one about the new medical examiner, new investigator for this year and for, we realize there's a recurrent cost, but Commissioner Cupid is also supporting that.
Okay.
Okay, so if we bring forward that one item right now, is that, will that make you happy?
That, that would be wonderful.
Okay, so let's do that, okay? Be that one item tomorrow.
Yeah, the, the operating costs, just as a.
Oh, that goes with the two, okay. So we'll put them both together.
Yes.
All right, they're, they're linked. And Commissioner Cupid also agrees with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll see that tomorrow morning. You're, you're absolutely welcome. And throw in some new pajamas while you're at it.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Good catch. Thank you, thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. I think we're good.
Okay.
I think we're good.
So just to be clear, I want to make sure that we, we provide you the attachment for tomorrow's agenda item. We have the one new medical examiner, new investigator, the operating costs, and then also the new microscope for the medical examiner position.
Whatever those two items were, that you had on the, I got to go back and find my sheet here now.
There was two items there listed, but there was an additional item for the new microscope.
Hold on, Bill.
Yes, sir.
I'm a lot older than you. If you're lucky, you'll live this long. Okay, so what we're going to bring forward tomorrow is the medical examiner. One new medical examiner, one new investigator, and that comes in at 22.224 for this year and 365.7 for next year, okay? We're going to bring that forward. We're going to bring forward the 12.8, 12.8,000 for the operating cost in light renovations for the new positions. We're going to bring that forward.
Yes, sir.
Those two items are what we're going to bring forward.
Okay, I just, that's why I wanted to clarify is because there's also a new microscope for the medical examiner position, which is not on the recommended list, but it was part of the, the entire list, which.
How much is that?
That is 14,000 even. So I just want to make.
No, we're going to do these two.
Those two, yes, sir. That's what I wanted to clarify.
We're not going to do mission creep here.
Gotcha.
These two tomorrow.
I, I hear you.
Because they're on the list.
Just clarifying.
Commissioner saw them and we all, we've all seen them now.
Yes.
That's, that's a agenda item to go out for an RFP. Right.
Okay.
So that's what we're agreeing on tomorrow.
Absolutely. Just want to clarify.
Right.
All right, thanks, sir.
We're good? All right, we're in German. Thank you all for coming today. See you tomorrow morning.